Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. It is 4:00 PM. This is the Board of Selectment meeting. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business, we have Lake Street Noticement 10. And we have Mr. Scott Daggett here presenting. Scott Daggett, would you like to come to the podium, introduce yourself, make a brief explanation? I don't need the...
You've been on this many times.
Correct.
My name is Scott Daggett. I am one of the members of the Lake Street Improvement Committee, along with Gary Coppa and Seamus Gamache, who couldn't be here today. Just to give you an update, so we've been going on and on and on with this particular project. Last year, we had Solitude Lake Management looking into it, wanted to use herbicides. Got a lot of pushback on that, so we decided shelved that. And we're going to now go with the use of an ecoharvester, which is basically mechanically pulling the weeds. We have a company out of Connecticut, CND Underwater. Jeff, who is one of the owners of the company, had come down here, taken a look at the ponds. I believe it was about a year and a half ago. I took a site visit with him, walked him through. He was considerably shocked as to how badly these ponds are, you know, the shape that they're in. So we went ahead and tried to organize something for this August, which apparently didn't happen. So I've got the Notice of Intent in tomorrow's meeting. We'll see how that goes with the Conservation Commission. And hopefully, we can move forward and shoot for August of 2025.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted, Scott, thank you. As you know, we had a larger Lake Street Improvement Committee. You know, I was sort of the de facto chair of that. And I really took more along the lines of the safety, you know, the guardrails and some of the aesthetic improvements there. But was able to, with Scott's leadership, create a weed subcommittee with Scott and Mr. Coppa and Mr. Gamache. And really, they've done all, you know, just wind them up and go. And they've really got this thing to where it's needed to be. And, you know, we look forward to the day when we can see that harvester, those wheels turning and, you know, see if we can make an impact over there. I know everybody I talked to, you know, my boys fish a lot down there. And there was one person I talked to who says, "Jesus, this place is awesome." You know, "It's such a great resource." And I'm really proud of the work that you guys have done, Darry and Scott, so thank you for that. And, you know, I think now that we've got this relationship reestablished with the city, we've got an MOU. But I think it's now time to step up our conversations with the city and try to get some more buy-in from them from a resource standpoint, from a technical expertise standpoint. Because at the end of the day, while we are the caretakers, they're still the owners. And I'd like to see that move forward. But I felt it was important for us to sort of move the plan along on our own rather than have to rely on somebody else. And I think we've done that now. We've got some good momentum there. And I look forward to having those conversations with the city.
Yeah, tomorrow, hopefully Chance Perks will be here tomorrow.
Great.
After the meeting, I'll have some discussion with him because I've made contact with the city in New Bedford numerous times and heard nothing but crickets. So I'm hoping that maybe with Chance's influence as the conservation agent there, maybe, you know, he can establish some conditions and...
Yeah, we've got, you know, I think all of us have relations with the city councilors or the mayor directly. I like to get it to that level. But again, as I mentioned, felt as if we were asking for approval all along, we wouldn't get it happened. So I felt we had to grab the steering wheel. Now we've done that, now it's time to go in that other direction. So, great, so thanks for your work.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Scott, why you mentioned August deadline twice? What's so specific about August?
So what's so specific about August is that's the prime time to go ahead and administer any kind of treatment to these weeds, whether it's going to be through mechanical pulling or the use of herbicides. That's when the weed growth is at its greatest throughout the whole year. Your hotter months are typically in August. The weeds are at full growth. So what you want to do is you want to impact these weeds when they're at their most potential growth. And that's why I say late July, anywhere between, you know, really late July to mid-August is typically when you want to hit these weeds.
Got it, thank you. Scott, I just, I want to reflect on what Mr. Wona said about your efforts and the committee's efforts to staying on the weed abatement thing, right? It's pretty disgusting when you drive down Lake Street and see those weeds in full bloom in, you know, late June, July. They're flowering or whatever. It's just, it's massive. It's taking over the ponds. And I think as Selectment owner alluded to, the Board of Selectmen are fully committed to the project. So we'll see what we can do and get some costs associated with it and see what we can do for funding and get this thing rolling and start the process anyway, right? So thank you for your work and thank you for the committee members' work as well, Mr. Coppa. I know I see him back there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Daggett. Gentlemen, next up, we have Council on Agent Building Use Fee Waiver. I spoke with Ms. Golda this weekend, and she also sent us a letter. She had a couple of groups reach out in regards to the new building use policy based on fees. And it looks like both of these particular groups came to an agreement that Ms. Golda said she agreed with. One was the Boy Scouts and one was my colleagues anonymous. My personal opinion on this is if Ms. Golda's okay with it, I'm okay with it. So I would just ask for a motion to approve a one-time yearly fee for these two organizations as agreed upon.
So move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have Local Building Inspector Appointment. We have Mr. Jeffrey Fabian. And Mr. Fabian is here today. If you'd like to introduce yourself to the podium, give us a brief history of your Kusnet life.
Hi, my name is Jeff Fabian. I'm a lifelong resident of Kusnet. Actually, went to elementary school and middle school with the chairman. And now I have a daughter that just started pre-K this week. So it's her first week. So it's pretty much the synopsis.
Nice. And we did get your letter, obviously. Growing up with you, I know the history of your family business in town.
Yep.
And it was always well regarded. So, gentlemen, if there is a motion to appoint Mr. Jeffrey Fabian as the local building inspector?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is it local building inspector or is it just for building and for inspections?
Local building inspector, which is different from building commissioner.
No, I know it's different from a building commissioner. But what is this gentleman's job going to be? Is he going to be a full-time inspector? Or is he just going to do inspections on behalf of the building department?
Inspections on behalf of the building department.
You good with that, Mr. Fabian?
Good with that.
I've read your resume. It's quite impressive. So thank you very much for having an interest in helping out the town of Kusnet.
Yep.
Motion to...
Yeah, I'll second that. But, Mr. Chairman, I just want to highlight the fact that, like, I think it's, this is, I think, the first step in us really starting to build a bench for some of our critical town departments. We've already got a couple of people doing inspections, right? And but when you get somebody, when you recognize talent and somebody's from town, you want to get them on the team. And, you know, you may have one inspection today and nothing for three months, who knows? But just getting somebody like Mr. Fabian, who's committed to the town, into the rotation, I think is really important. And I think we're really going to start looking at that for other departments. You know, we talked about the tree warden. You know, if we can create a second there per diem, I think we've got to do that type of stuff because the more folks we have from town, you know, in our departments, then we'll be better served. So thank you for stepping up and congratulations. So I'll second that motion.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Fabian. Next, we have Joint Transportation Planning Group appointee and alternate.
And the planning board representative to Serpents. Oh. We've had a Mr...
Sure, you're correct.
Yep. Mr. Boucher is...
It's not Dr. Boucher on the Serpents. Dr. Boucher's on the Finance Committee. Steve Boucher is on the planning board.
That's what I was going to say. I didn't say doctor, I said Mr.
Oh, I thought you said doctor.
Yeah.
Okay.
But he is no longer able to serve these positions. And talking to the chairman of the planning board, he asked that the town planner, who's also a resident of the town, as the representative and the conservation agent, as the alternative.
And I believe the planner has worked hand-in-hand with Serpents and Joint Transportation Planning Group in her past capacity in her former job too, so...
Motion to appoint, as presented.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have Buzzers Bay Coalition Watershed Ride, 2024. We do this every year, gentlemen. This is going to compete a small portion of our town. Looks like Long Plain Road and Perry Ho Road are expecting between 10:30 and 12:30 on October 6th, 2024. And they will have flaggers to make sure that the riders make it safely through the course. There won't be any road closings for this. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have a letter of resignation from Michelle Santos. This letter is to notify you that I will be leaving my position as senior clerk in the building department. My last day will be Friday, August 30th, 2024. Thank you for this opportunity to serve the town of Kusnet. I wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Is there a motion to accept letter of resignation with regret?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, if you don't mind, I'm going to take this next one out of order so Mr. Tibbles can speak on the golf, the updated bunker, because I have some questions for him. So, Mr. Tibbles, looks like you sent us...
Geez, your eyes are worse than mine. I got a few years on them. Good evening.
How are you?
Good, thanks. So I believe you have in your packets there some of the information that addressed the changes that we spoke of at, is it two meetings ago, I believe?
Yeah.
Two meetings ago. The first item, if you look, is entitled page 39. There was a question about alternatives to using capillary concrete as a bunker liner. Under item V on page 39, the bunker liner says, "Shelby capillary concrete or approved equal as supplied by the manufacturer." So that gives the contractor the opportunity to participate in bidding with capillary concrete or to submit an approved equal as an alternative to using that particular product. If you look at the next page, it will look somewhat like this. These are design specifications for the base of the bunker. And you'll note there that it also indicates that capillary concrete is suggested to be used or approved equal. So not only does it mention it in the actual verbiage, but it also shows it on the construction detail for the liner at the base of the bunker. The next item was taking the third hole or proposed work on the bunker on the third hole, taking that out of the project as such and making it an alternate bid number one, which means that the contractors will be bidding primarily on work on the sixth, seventh, and tenth holes. And the third hole is an add alternate. And that's specified here. Alternate one shall be the addition of the entire scope shown on detailed plan for hole number three. Detailed plan was provided. It also lists that on the top of the detailed plan, which includes provisions in installation, drainage, gravel, topsoil, nade to seed, et cetera. And bunkers and additional work includes sod, stripping, shaping, filling, et cetera. And those, I believe, were the items we had in question as of the last meeting.
Mr. Tibbles, the only real question I have, the approved equal...
Yes.
That goes back to, I believe, Mr. Gaspar had mentioned, the alternative to the concrete. Is, when they, when they listen to approved equal, does that leave anything vague, too vague to really tell you?
Not really, because there are, within the business, there are probably six, possibly seven, different bunker liners. Capillary concrete, there's what's called Billy bunker, different type of liner. There's three or four different, excuse me, probably six or seven different accepted liners that are standard throughout the industry that everybody knows about. If someone were to come up with something else, for instance, years ago, before they decided to come up with bunker liners, what we used to do is take the bottom four to six inches of the sand trap and pack it with clay. Put the drainage tile in the clay, sand on top. Unfortunately, packing it with clay doesn't necessarily work too well in this part of New England where the frost heaves and thaws and pushes the rocks up through the base of the clay and into the bottom. And unfortunately, at times, the clay seeps into your drainage pipes and thus clogs the pipes, and then you have a problem with drainage in the bunker. But yes, what they would do is they would present their approved equal or their suggestion for an equal and a supporting documentation that that would suffice.
Gentlemen, any questions? I think that covers what we asked you to do a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Kelly, did we make a motion at that meeting for any reason to send us out? Pretty sure Mr. Tibbles asked us to send us out as a request.
Yeah, I mean, we would like to get it out simply because basically for this time of year, I think we're running out of time. Not so much that the weather isn't what we'd like it to be, but everybody wants their work done in the end of September, October, and November. So I am sure that most of the contractors who'd be bidding are probably booked. We could do some work in late November, depending on their availability and how the weather holds out. But I anticipate most of them possibly looking to the spring or early spring unless we have a very wet spring, which would cause us to have some issues with moving equipment and grading and what have you, so. But once we get it out, once we get the numbers back, and then we can even see if we're going to do anything anyway.
If we...
Need a motion to allow them to set up for RFP?
If we end up, worst-case scenario, and it goes into the next fall, will we, will the bidders give us that much time?
Yeah, I mean, they're not going to, they're not going to not provide a bid. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if there would be some contingency in there about the possibility of prices changing. But again, their schedule, a lot of the schedule of the contractors is based on when the active golf season is and how active the particular golf courses are that are looking for work to be done. Some golf courses, for instance, and private clubs are not significantly active after September because all the snowbirds take off and go down to Florida. So they have no significant golf schedule. You don't want to look at our golf schedule for September. And, you know, and then once you get into beginning, the beginning of October is okay. Once you get to the end of October, as long as we can still cut sod, then we're in good shape. Soon as the ground starts to freeze and the sod starts to freeze, then all the cutting stops because you're not going to be able to roll it. You're not going to be able to spread it. You're going to basically have some dead roots on your hands. So we could probably get into the fall.
You're not going out for firm bids. You're going out for the possibility of contingencies.
Well, they're going to give you, they're going to give you a bid in the time, and they're going to give it within the timeframe that we'd like to have. The question is, you know, some people are going to be looking at their schedule and say, "Okay, I've got this job here. I got this job there. I'd like to bid on that one, but I'm going to spread myself too thin."
Mr. Gaspar.
The best scenario is to get it out and see what we get back in the first place.
Thanks, Steve. My question, I guess, would be more for Mr. Kelly is if they put out an RFP, can you put in the bid spec that the bid would need to be held for a certain amount of months? I've seen that happen before in paving, where we require a bidder to hold the bid for X amount of time. I think that's an option we can do. And if you say you put six months, not saying that's the right number, but let's just arbitrarily speak it, six months, and then you put six months there after, so it'll be a full year, a maximum excellerate, it could be 10% or 5% of the project original bid of project cost. Could we do something like that in a bid spec right out of the gate?
We can. We could go firm bid and then a second bid with that type of contingency.
Firm bid to be held for so long, though, right? We can't just let somebody bid on it. And then you get in a situation that Steve's talking about, weather conditions, everything's about golf and weather conditions. We only get a couple of months or a month or so by the time bids come back. So, you know, expedite the bid thing. You've got 30 days to bid on it, whatever Steve thinks is inappropriate.
So you do the firm bid for the spring and contingency for the fall.
Something like that, right? To hold it.
Yep. I'm good. Let's roll. Thanks, Steve.
You need a motion to allow the golf course to go out for an RFP?
Subject to review.
Subject to review. I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
Steve, as soon as you get it, we'll send it to council.
Excuse me?
As soon as you get it, we'll send it to council.
The RFP.
As far as firm versus contingency.
Oh, firm, okay. So you want me to have the, we'll change the...
That's all we have to change.
Change the directions.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to jump back to the town meeting warrant here, gentlemen. Steve, I just wanted to ask you that question before I forgot it. I appreciate it.
Works for me. As soon as that, I've been here since 4:00 this morning, so you put this.
All right. Gentlemen, you should have an updated copy. There's some grammatical errors that have been fixed, and there's a couple more that we will be, Mr. Kelly will be fixing with some figures. Let's see.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Kelly.
First one is Article 1. The verbiage will reflect the bottom line figure of the total. Thank you, Mr. Gaspar. Second, major change is that we removed the rescind previous capital articles. We're holding that to the spring. We have gone with the special act option for the charter change. And I'd like some board input tomorrow, if possible, just on the explanation before we finish drafting it. Talked to the town clerk about the bylaw committee on the amend the soil conservation, where we take out...
My language.
About a half, about a dozen words said to make us in compliance with the state DOT rights. We've added two articles. I know we've discussed them individually. One is to fund a fire department study. And that will be from funds that are in the EMS reserve account. That will be reflected in the motion for 5,500.
What article we got here?
Articles I. The others said no change other than grammatical. Article 10, in discussion with the fire chief, we limited the scope to repair of replacement of windows, the scraping painting of the exterior, and the replacing of the generator. As far as the roof and other work, we're waiting on that. The, this is not to exceed 49,999. The reason for it is we have no pricing for any of the other work that's come in yet. And we wanted to make sure that that work would be priced right and in compliance with state law.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gaspar.
Before we move on to the next one, because we're, that's the only two from fire.
Correct.
I have a concern. I know we got a list from the fire chief for a number of different articles. But my concern, most importantly, is the ambulance request. As you know, we did an appropriation for an ambulance request a year and a half ago. And it's taken roughly two years. I think we don't, probably looking at another six months to a year before we get delivery. Chief?
Delivery, delivery on that ambulance that we already have on order. We're looking, it's still on time. That's December of '25, January of '26. It was a 30-month contract that we signed in June of '23.
So the chief does have a request in for another ambulance from the fund through EMS reserve receipt account. And I know there's appropriate funds in there to do a, to borrow against that EMS reserve receipt account from prior years. We had a balance in fiscal year 2023 of roughly $760,000. Does that sound right, chief?
Six seventy.
Six seventy? Sorry, reverse the numbers. So my concern is not being able to have another ambulance on order, seeing how the timeframe is, two and a half years, roughly two, two and a half years to get one in. We all know that our ambulances are the bread and butter. We also know that we use $550,000 this year. We use $550,000 to balance the general fund. If we have a problem with one of our ambulances and we're left with one ambulance, you can basically take that revenue that's generated every year and you have a shortfall in what we use it for, the general fund. So when I look at this ambulance, I think it's most important that we get on the queue for another order of another ambulance and not wait another eight or nine months before the next town meeting comes. And then that's three, three and a half years. We're putting ourselves at risk. We're putting our public at risk. And I'm not comfortable with that. So I know it's not inside the warrant, but I just figured I'd bring it up for discussion with the board. Because I think we need to be proactive instead of reactive when it comes to that. The ambulance is our bread and butter. If we have a problem and we're down in the ambulance, as we have been in the past, it's going to kill revenue. So my concern is not moving forward with an article for an ambulance. I know he's got other requests. I've looked at them. I've had that conversation. The biggest one is the ambulance. Weighing, weighing on it, inflation costs. If we can secure that and lock it in, I think that's, that's our job to decide that. And I think that we need to act on that ambulance sooner rather than later.
Yep. A couple of conversations with the chief, myself. He's had bad luck with his other ambulances. And you also got to figure that too. We have some faulty maintenance before you took the helm.
We have some faulty maintenance before you took the helm, that you walked right into a mess when it came to engines, and I'm pretty sure you'd be confident in changing your own engines now, but it's, looking at it this way, you know...
Just going to not wear white the days I do it.
This is, this is also something that is funded from his own accounts here, and it's, you know, it's paid for, and like you said, Mr. Gassbar, if we lose a source of revenue like this, town budget's gone.
It's just, it's a real concern for the board of selectmen not to at least have this discussion tonight on, on this warrant, and, and I, I just feel that with the wait period that we're seeing with this current ambulance that we're waiting for, the problems that we have with the existing two that we have right now, it could be detrimental to our community by not being proactive now. So there's money in the account that's already been pre-certified from prior years, as we said, I look back at 2023, the funding is available, we're not necessarily even going to take it from there, because by the time we get to the spring town meeting, we're just getting a funding source in place so the chief can do what he did last time, borrow up to X amount of money, put it out there, and then we can do something over the next years, abandon something that we might, so if we're going to say we're going to borrow up to 600K, we're probably going to do a lot less than that, because I think at that point, if we get it on order, we take delivery, we'll trade something in, right?
Yeah, this will have a trade-in attached to it.
That value will bring that, the value will bring that cost down substantially, I think, on the ambulance, so it's a borrow up to 600K, whatever we, we save from EMS reserve, we go to the spring town meeting, we could do a ban on it for permanent funding, excess revenue. Fire EMS, we could essentially probably just take 300 from the EMS surplus account for the first 50%, ban it for the next two years, and use 150 each year after that, if it comes out to 600, and your ambulance is bought and paid for.
Agreed.
Yep.
Mr. Kelly?
The language we used the last time that was vetted with bond counsel, if we use that language this time, then when, to get in the queue, then when we go forward, which will be maybe in May, but it could be after that, depending on when the chief gets firm numbers, it could be after June, then just making sure the board's informed, then you're going to have to reauthorize and go forward, but I have no problem using the language we've used in the past to, which has been vetted with bond counsel. And then, if you need to change the language sometime in the future, after May, whether it's banning it or partial borrowing, then you just have to reauthorize it.
That's fine, I think by the spring town meeting, we'll know what we're doing as far as the price goes, is that correct? It didn't take you more than six months to secure price, we just need the authorization to show that we have a payment methodology in place to put the order in, other than that, they won't give us anything, is that correct?
Correct.
So that's all we're doing now, spring comes, we'll do what we need to do to authorize however we're going to pay for that sum of money, whatever it may be.
But if you don't do it in the spring, you don't have to reauthorize?
They'd like to do it in the spring, so it's all set for the future, right?
I should have firm numbers no later than January, so they should be...
How does that work, once we, once we got the numbers from the last one, chief? How did that work? Did we make payment already for that one?
Nope. Nope, we haven't, we haven't hit anything, we're still sitting on that, on that funding source. How it works is they just want to know that you have a methodology of payment secured, whether that's bonding, whether we enter into a lease agreement or a payment agreement with the company, and that gets us into the queue, and the authorization from you guys at town meeting is mostly for our own peace of mind, so that when we do figure out the company that we want to go with, the contract that we want to sign, that Mr. Kelly can sign it, knowing that we're not signing something that at some point was going to come due, and we don't know how we're going to pay it.
We can do that?
Same language.
Yeah, I don't know if we borrow up to 610, we call it 600, whatever the number may be, right?
Six and one-half, dozen of the other six.
If you do identical language, then bond counsel can...
Whatever, whatever you want to do. But I, I thank you, chief, for giving us a list, and I thank you, Mr. Chairman and selectmen, all of them, for at least considering this additional article. It's important for our community, as well as our fire EMS employees.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to add an article about ambulance?
You can just put that in the end when you tell me to go forward with this, if you want.
I'll make a motion to add an ambulance article to the warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The fire station one, I think I've explained.
Yep.
The next articles are from the school committee, authorization for extended school transportation contract. It's a three-year contract with two one-year options to see if they can have savings versus just having to go out every three years.
Gentlemen, after my conversation with Mr. McIntyre, this would indeed save money. There's no increase in years four and five, and based on historical data, the bus contracts have gone up every single year since the start of things, so they actually have two years where they stay at 0% increase, it is automatically a savings in my book. I also spoke with Patrick on, he has a, he had asked a couple of questions in regards to buses and gas fees, et cetera. He did write into the contract with the bus company, there is an escalator de-escalator, so if the price of gas does change, there's credits, and Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, that's monthly, so it's actually reviewed monthly, which also can benefit us if the price goes down. And speaking on the electric bus, I actually read a big article on it, because I, Mr. Kelly and I had asked him about it, the cost savings don't outweigh the cost of the bus over time. In a small community like ours, it would actually probably cost us way more.
I, I don't disagree with Franch, I agree with that, I just, I've read, Fall River got a fleet, the Vetra gets a fleet, I don't know if it's because they're considered a gateway city or whatever, but, you know, I trust Patrick and his good judgment.
It involves a lot of schools.
Does a deal out there, he'll get it, so, but I just, I at least asked the question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gassbar.
Patrick, when, when you, you want to come to the podium, I think you've got a couple of articles coming up, so, instead of everybody trying to figure out who I'm speaking to?
No problem.
Thanks, Patrick. So when you, if the contract gets locked in, what's, what's the kind of agreement? I appreciate the extended two years, there's going to be no movement in price, it'll be locked in at the third year of the contract, right?
So ultimately, we have a three-year contract, we need to go to town meeting on anything over three years, so we sent out an RFP for a three-year with two option years, so in year three, going into year four, we can look at the market and decide we want to execute option year four, or we can throw it out and say we're going back out to bid, you know, who knows what happens at that point, maybe any, everything looks better, and buses are cheaper, and gas is cheaper, and everyone's happier, right?
That's funny.
But that's, that's the opportunity for this, and the same thing for four to five, so we never lock ourselves in outside of the three, we're locked into three, and then we go year to year, it's up to us.
Okay, so four can move?
No, our, our prices are locked in, but we can choose to not execute option year four because the market looks better, or there's competitors out there that are willing to bid against the company that we always get.
So you have the right to, it's like an option, right, to exercise year four and five, if you feel that that three, third year was a good deal, but if you feel you can go out for another three-year deal, you put it back out to bid, you can beat the three-year deal?
Exactly.
Then you just tell that company, we're not going to exercise our option on four, which obviously means you're out for five as well.
And then if we do exercise for four, we can still do the same for five, we can say year five, market looks better than what's written on our bid, we're going back out to market.
So the fuel surcharge de-escalator escalated, Mr. Eamonn just talked about, when does that get locked in? When you lock in a contract, we'll define price then?
So that's locked in because it was a required part of our bid, so it was bid on and it's built in now. The strategy to that was, you know, they, these companies, from my understanding, is they'll build, they don't know the gas prices just like us, so they tend to build that into their price over the years, and it's, it's usually overestimated to cover their butts versus, you know, being conservative. So this way, they were able to, and technically, bring their bid down, knowing that if gas prices skyrocketed, we have an escalator, if gas prices decreased, we have a savings ourselves. When we were going out to bid, gas prices were pretty, pretty high, given the, the timing of everything, that it's already in our favor right now.
When do you go out to bid again for a bus contract?
When will we go out again, or when did?
Yeah, so we're in a three-year probably now.
So we just bid this out in February, March of this past year.
So we're in year one?
We're in year one, starting this September.
Is this company willing to do that if we get this article passed at town meeting?
They have to. Again, so we, so the, the caveat is school started, right? This was supposed to be on the spring town meeting, it, for whatever reason, got omitted. We needed to lock into a three-year, so we're locked into a three-year. Now I'm asking for permission for those option years. So we have a three-year with the fuel escalator de-escalator, all other sorts of changes compared to our previous contracts. You know, it used to be a, a set minimum on field trips, well, our field trips were around town that we did a live mile bid, so now we're paying them for the 10 miles back and forth, rather than their formula that was ultimately built for 100-mile round trip, so there's savings all over the place in this bid. And like I said, we're, we're in a three-year contract now, we just want our option years because it's going to be at the end.
There's no cap on it, on an escalator?
Nope, it's just you analyze it monthly based on the set price that was, you pick a baseline for the bidding process, if it's 10 cents over that baseline, there's a formula, if it's 10 cents below that baseline, there's a formula. And again, that baseline was pretty high, so I have my fingers crossed.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's great. Might we all stay up for the next one? Article 12, transfer funds from the school special education reserve fund. You explained this to me last week, which I appreciate, and I'm sure Mr. Kelly shared some information on these gentlemen, but if you'd like to explain to them the situation with this one?
Yeah, so long story short, this was discussed, again, while building the budget last spring, with the team, school committee, finance committee, budget subcommittee. Ultimately, our circuit breaker funds that offset our special ed costs went from about $330,000 of an offset down to $117,000. So there's, there's a pretty good gap. I carried the previous number in our budget unknowingly until we got too far in the process, and I said, uh-oh, there needs to be a correction here, and in order to close the gap on the budget at that time, I said, let's use the stabilization fund to honor that mistake and bring it back up to what circuit breaker was the year before. Everyone deliberated, discussed, agreed, and that's ultimately how we were balancing our budget for FY '25, and again, should have been on spring town meeting, but for whatever reason, was omitted, but that, that's really it.
For whatever reason, it was omitted?
I, speak candidly, Patrick. No, I submitted the articles by the deadline with these.
Right, so we know what your budget was up, right, and you're saying so it was, you know, omitted from last town meeting, the article, for, and I'm assuming that you were looking, because you talked about the circuit breaker money that came in last, right, and you were looking to, to offset that, or you would have never been able to reduce your budget to 335, is what you're telling me, you would have came in at the 525, right? This number plus up to 335, right?
Yep, and that was, that was candidly discussed at that time.
Okay, so now we're in a situation where we're building, so the one-time revenue source, which we use in here, the stabilization account, now we're going to have to build that in to the budget next year, right?
Next year? No, not necessarily.
Fiscal year 2026, moving forward?
No, it's not best practice, I mean, just as you guys run funds, operations with stabilization funds, it's not best practice to do so, we were sort of honoring the cliff that was circuit breaker for FY '25 to balance that budget, but next year we'll have to sharpen our pencils or go back to the drawing board, but I don't want this to become common practice where we make this, you know, funds non-existent by taking all the funds out of it, if you will.
Right, right, I, I understand what you're saying, it better explained now than we just put it. It's unfortunate, but, you know, the concern is building it into the budget moving forward, right, because we, we know we have these circumstances, especially with special ed, that's why we built a stabilization account, right, but it's not to fully fund, call it a student, right? And that's dangerous, because you're using one-time revenues, which this was built from, to now offset a budget, right?
So it's not built from revenues as much as it is savings, so for instance, I think two spring town meetings ago, we had savings in our operating budget that we had an article to say, let's fund the stabilization up to our limit with our savings before it closes out to free cash, so however you want to shake it, but that would be the methodology again this year, our first priority.
Anything that gets returned from the school department, though, and that is to say you're talking about, that's technically incumbent by free cash, right? It's unexpendable funds from the prior year, that's how you derive to free cash the following year, right? It's unencumbered?
Yep.
Right, that's what you just said?
Yep.
Okay, so it's still one-time revenue?
Yeah, well, I, I wasn't calling it revenue, because it's, it's not from any earnings, it's from, it's not a revenue stream, if you will.
Okay, so you're trying to say to the board and to the townspeople, we're going to do our best not to make sure we don't automatically start off with the next fiscal year with $190,000 deficit?
Which we aren't, because this was discussed, and everyone had agreed upon it for FY '25, and no, it won't be built into our practice of submitting a budget.
Okay, thank you. It's tough, right?
It's not fun, I mean, the other thing we can...
It's a big, it's a big number, and I get it, and I appreciate that, that you're going to look at other ways to not put this as a permanent part of your budget, right?
The anomaly was the circuit breaker.
Correct.
It tended to be in the $300,000, all of a sudden, it came in at $114,000, $117,000, don't quote me on it, but hopefully, based on our submissions of eligible expenses in FY '25, that number's back up and it closes the gap itself, but...
The only, I think the lesson that I learned from this conversation that we're finally having, Patrick, is when the school committee or school administration watches the board of selectors meeting with a review in the warrant, and you see that something is being omitted, somebody needs to run down here and talk to us, right?
Nobody.
End of story, so that this doesn't happen in the future, right?
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Moving forward, anything like we discussed, anybody who's sitting in the chair, whether it's reaching out, writing down a meeting, anybody who's sitting in the chair, if there's anything you notice that gets missed or slips through, by all means, reach out, so we don't have to play catch-up and run back and forth. All right, next two, we got the energy management. Did you want to start with your consultation, your consultants, rather?
Yeah, so if we can pull them up on teams, so, you know, this goes back almost a year now of what we've been battling at Acushnet Elementary with our steering committee discussions to ultimately say, hey, let's procure this, not through capital means, but a, a performance contract.
But what is it, is this dealing with the mold issue?
Yes. Air quality. So, where was I? So we pursued the performance contracting as the steering committee sort of agreed upon, we've been working on it ever since, Train was selected as our energy service company to, to help perform an investment-grade audit to look at what's needed in these buildings to...
From Brock.
...address them, and more recently...
Oh, yes.
Can somebody talk to those people?
Yeah, you can just talk, they can hear you. Hi, we're at the board's lockman's meeting, we just started the teams, we just want to let you know that everyone can hear you.
Morning.
Oh, okay, never mind.
I guess they don't want to be with you.
All right, we can jump back in if you want, after Patrick explains what he was explaining.
Sorry.
No, it's all right. You didn't drop the call.
We're muted, it says we.
No, we're, we're good, we're okay for now.
All right, so long story short, we've been working on this for a year, we put the articles in as anticipated, again, you know, we had conversations about this, so that this would happen in the fall as planned, we're hoping October, November, it got moved up to September because of the elections, you know, we've been up against it all summer, you know, working engineers, architects, everything through our buildings, and then, you know, we got wind of maybe these articles weren't going to make it on fall town meeting, there's some clarity that needed to be provided, we met with Chairman Hinckley and Town Administrator Mr. Kelly just last week to say, hey, what's going on, what do we need to clarify, you know, we thought everything was, everybody was on the same page with at least getting these articles. What do we need to clarify? You know, we thought everything was, everybody was on the same page with at least getting these articles on the warrant. Um, we had a pretty productive conversation that led to this presentation, which we're gonna try to keep brief, but get you guys up to speed on what's going on, what this entails. And, and how, you know, this is ultimately the most fiscally responsible group we could come up with for this.
Hi. Can you hear us? Hello? Oh, okay, I heard from that here. I'm sorry. It worked last week.
So gentlemen, just so you know, this was gonna be Train explaining questions about phases and all the other documents that Patrick has sent over that have been having Sydney forward to you as well. In regards to this, um, while we're waiting for them to come in, gentlemen, if you have any questions for Patrick, please speak.
I guess, is there, I've heard a lot, I haven't been paying too much attention to like the ins and outs per se, but I just kept hearing like last year it was mold, mold, mold. It was a big mold issue. Is there a mold issue or is there not a mold issue?
So last year we very much had an issue with surface molds throughout the Acushnet Elementary School. Um, that, I mean, we closed school for two and a half days to deep clean the entire building. I mean, that was no secret. Um, from there, you know, we, we've had engineers in and out of the buildings to say, what's causing this? You know, people were saying, we have a sick building, we have this or that. Ultimately, these engineers assessed and said, three different companies said, hey, it's, it's a humidity issue. You know, it's a building envelope issue. So we, you know, stepped back and said, okay, how do we, how do we pursue this further? We need to know what's wrong with these buildings and how much we need to invest in these buildings to address the issue, to get some longevity out of these issues, out of these buildings. So we're not talking about building $100 million schools because of surface mold. Um, so that's where we went with this performance contracting through the Department of Energy and Resources. Um, there's a lot of incentive, which we'll go over this, on going that route. Um, but ultimately, they do an investment-grade audit of anything in your building that consumes or loses energy and tells you what's wrong with it. So it checks all the boxes. It looks at almost all our major capital assets, you know, our boilers, our generators, our alarm systems, our controls, our heating, our cooling, whether it's existent or not. It looks at our building envelope and it says, here's everything that's wrong and this is what it's gonna cost to fix that. So that's just what they're gonna give us. We've kind of boiled it down to a phase to say, we wanna combat the air quality at AES so that we don't deal with this surface mold issue again. Once we cleaned, once we plugged in the 50-plus individual classroom-sized dehumidifiers in all the rooms, we've been able to manage it. We have those running 24/7. We have fans running 24/7, circulate the air so there's no stagnant air, and we've been successful thus far. But this is very much a Band-Aid fix. And, you know, as Mr. Gasper said in some of our earlier conversations, we wanna be proactive rather than reactive to this before it is a bigger fix. I mean, we invested $300,000-plus of ESSER funds without asking the town for a single dollar during the school closure, during this deep clean, during the duct cleaning, purchasing dehumidifiers, replacing bulletin boards and carpets that couldn't be cleaned. Um, and we can't, we can't afford that to do that again, neither can the town. Um, so we're seeking a prominent fix, which is ultimately why we're here.
Hi, everyone, can you hear us?
Did that answer your question, Mr. Moore?
I think so. I, I guess, so you're telling me we have a surface mold issue now?
It's not existing now because we're running around crazy, emptying dehumidifiers every four or five hours, circulating fans at all times. Um, it, it's, it's, there, there's no evidence and no testing that has alluded that there's still a mold problem in our schools. But we can't operate, we can't operate on these terms.
I get you. Again, I'm trying to like separate fact from fiction and what the-
No, so we can-
What the perception is versus what the reality is, right? Because I'm-
So we've sent all the testing results over again, you know, last year, we can do it again. But December, late December was the last time we physically tested the airspace and it was our, you know, seventh, eighth round of testing. We tested samples of surfaces and we tested air and all levels were acceptable. Um, and again, since then, we've kept it that way. We haven't retested, but we have had no visual evidence of mold because of the steps we've taken on these dehumidifiers and fans and open doors and closed windows and everything else.
Yes, I, I do, Max.
Hi, can you hear us? We can hear you now. Let's see. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I fixed it. Sorry. We got, we're good. So, uh, we have the Board of Selectmen here, Patrick's on this side. Um, so I'll stick out of the way so you can see, uh, everyone for the most part.
Sydney.
Thank you.
While we jump in.
Thank you so much.
Just keep an eye out for the F A Y P.
Patrick, I, I'm not sure if we missed an introduction, if you, if you would like to introduce um, what we're here to talk about, or if you just want me to go ahead and kick it off?
Yeah, so I'll introduce you guys individually real quick. Um, we've sort of talked about the current status of our elementary school and our, our buildings otherwise, and how we got here. Um, but for everyone listening and for the Board of Selectmen, this is Train Technologies. They were the ESCO that was selected to perform this, uh, energy management service for us. Um, I'll let them get into names as they proceed through their slides. And then we also have, um, Beth Greenblatt from Beacon Integrated Services, who's our owner consultant. Um, she works, she's the expert of experts in this field. She works with the Department of Energy Resources. Everyone knows her. She's been a phenomenal asset for us, um, in working through this process. So with that, I'll let you guys take it away to the presentation.
Thank you so much and thank you, thank you for the introduction, Patrick. And also thank you to the Board of Selectmen for having us today. Uh, like Patrick mentioned, we're here to talk about our engagement with the Acushnet Public Schools to come together and really find a, a solution for a comprehensive, um, project that really addresses all the needs of the school facilities while fitting within fiscal budgets and, and getting a project that, that fulfills the requirements of a comprehensive energy management services solution. Uh, so the agenda today is, is like Patrick said, hopefully we'll keep it brief, um, no promises. But we'll first introduce the project team, talk about the why of the project and why we're here and why we, we first became engaged, um, a schedule update on where we are to date and what we have done thus far with, with the Acushnet team. Um, reviewing the, the scope of what we're proposing for a Phase One project. A budget review and then just discussing some financials of, of what support we think is out there and then closing with some community benefits and Q and A. Uh, feel free to ask questions throughout. I, I think that's better anyways. If you, if you ask a question and, and it comes to mind, just go ahead and stop me. I can't always see questions come up, but I've asked Beth and Max to be monitoring the chat in case any do, do come up. So feel free. Uh, so this is the project team, both the Acushnet team and the Train team. On the Acushnet side, we obviously have Superintendent Dr. Paula Bailey, Patrick McIntyre, Business Manager, Steve Lilette, Facilities Director, and Beth Greenblatt, who's here with us, who's the owner's rep from Beacon Integrated Solutions. Um, the entire Acushnet team has been so supportive of, of really enabling Train to do, to do our job and coming up with solutions to kind of, um, really pull together a comprehensive project. So we really appreciate, um, the team working with us to make that happen. And then on the Train side, you have myself, Morgan Paris, I'm the Energy Services Account Executive here with Train, which just means I'm the, I'm the point person for this project uh, from start to finish of developing it, uh, working with the team, um, helping to get it financed and supported, um, however that may be. And then, um, really long-term to make sure over the years that this is a successful project from, from an Acushnet's perspective, long-term. Um, and then we have Max Ma here, who's our professional engineer and project developer. Uh, Max, I don't know if you wanna say anything to introduce yourself to?
Nice to meet you. Good, good evening, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm, my name is Max Ma. I'm a project developer on this project. And I'm happy to clarify if you have any questions on the technical details of the developed solutions and happy to, uh, point out some examples of our, um, past solutions developed to a similar project scope. Thank you, Morgan.
Thanks, Max. Uh, so a little bit of what we're calling the why of this project is really to address some growing needs across the two schools um, as it relates to physical plant equipment, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, and building management controls. Um, what we do is we come in and we really try and make buildings last. Um, and that's, that's what a lot of this project is. It's, it's ensuring that we have a building that's sustainable and provides really a comfortable and efficient learning space for teachers and also students as well. Um, a lot of our projects include, um, improving the indoor environmental quality of these spaces. Um, specifically at, at the elementary school, we know this is a high priority, uh, issue. And then as a part of this legislation of Chapter 25A 11I, which we'll talk about in the next slide, um, reducing energy consumption and demand while we enhance and upgrade to more energy-efficient equipment is also key here. Um, addressing some deferred maintenance naturally comes with upgrading infrastructure. And then something we'll also talk about into more of the financing slide is optimizing green communities funding and really taking advantage of available funds, not only at the state but local level, um, to, to really enhance this project and make sure it's a, a good one and that we're using these funds appropriately. Just one quick slide on performance contracting. That's the, the theory behind this, this legislation, Chapter 25A 11I, which we engaged under. Um, it's regulated by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, the T D O B R. And it's where one qualified firm provides both the design and engineering, the installation, and then guaranteeing the energy savings over the long term. The life of these agreements can be up to 20 years. Um, so they really are long-term engagements and agreements between two parties. Um, and it's, it's so that we really are both invested in the solution and the long-term operation of, of whatever project you elect to move forward with. Um, these projects can be paid over time entirely or in part by energy savings. That's where this Massachusetts legislation is actually unique from other states. And then there's flexibility in how you were to go about, um, financing or, or paying for a project of this nature. To give you an update on where we are in the process, um, this is really a nine-step of what are the, the key steps of a performance contracting or energy management services agreement process. It starts off, as Patrick mentioned, with a request for qualifications. Um, that was issued in February of 2024. Train was selected in May of 2024 and we executed a detailed audit agreement, uh, which we call the I G A, which is essentially a detailed audit of your buildings in July of 2024. So since July, we have been walking throughout the two schools, developing a detailed scope of improvements, uh, engaging the necessary stakeholders and really narrowing down on a scope of work um, that meets the school's, uh, really top priority issues. Um, so right now we're, I have my arrow pointed at step six, which is really defining a project to be prepared for town meeting, September of 2024. And then step seven through nine are, they're estimated, right? So best-case scenario for installation of this schedule is for summer '25. So that's really why this is priority, um, schedule for us is so that we can order, receive equipment and have that in so that these solutions are, are ready to go come, come cooling season next year. I just wanted to give you a, a quick snapshot of the different types of measures that you look at when we, when we perform an investment-grade audit. Um, so for both schools, we've, we've looked at lighting, building envelope, controls, insulation, kitchen walk-in cooler, freezer controls, um, solar renewable energy systems, transformer upgrades, other HVAC system upgrades, air purification measures, and even water conservation measures. So when we say comprehensive, we really do mean everything from the, the roof and the building envelope all the way down to lighting and, and any other, um, typical energy conservation measures you could think of. Um, what we've narrowed down for a Phase One scope of work will be four different scopes, four different slides I'll go through right now, starting off with the HVAC upgrades at Acushnet Elementary School. Um, so the goal of this is to, to improve the indoor comfort and humidity at the elementary school through upgrading the HVAC systems and controls. Um, so we'll be repairing, in some cases, replacing, in other cases, obsolete equipment and components and adding in cooling so that we're able to better control humidity and comfort in those spaces. It'll be improving indoor air quality, environmental quality, um, and that will be done through a variable refrigerant flow system called VRF heat pumps, um, for really efficient heating and cooling. So in those swing season months when the heating load is, is relatively small, we'll be, actually be utilizing, um, these electric systems to do that. And then when it gets into the little bit of a cooler ones, we'll, we'll ask for the, the, um, typical boiler system to take over there. Because of the extensive, uh, needs of a, of a new system like this, we had to do some additional development work and, um, studies in order to understand what the impact on electrical structural of the building would be. So we're including those as well to accommodate these types of, um, extensive upgrades. But the total added cooling capacity of this new system would be over 300 tons, which is a, it's a pretty big system. Um, I think Max noted it's about 450 mid-size window air conditioners. Uh, so that's a lot, but it'll be a great way to, to really comprehensively approach the HVAC systems associated with the elementary school. Second scope of work included in, in Phase One would be the building management system. This is the controls that we actually attach to both our new systems, the VRF in the previous slide, but also the existing systems as well. Um, so that would be coordinating when does that heating of the VRF system happen versus when does the heating of the boiler system happen? It'll include the controls of ancillary equipment and also includes us repairing some of the, the pieces that we imagine have, have failed over the past couple of years. Um, it'll include full integration, visibility of all the buildings on one web-based system. So Steve can actually pull up his phone and see when he wakes up in the morning, you know, what are the set points in each space? Do it have any alarms? Um, so really improve visibility of, of issues as they arise versus going on more of a fix-on fail approach. Um, we would be replacing obsolete controllers and, um, this is actually, to note, it's a requirement of, uh, Eversource and the Mass Save Incentives to have controls um, integrated, what you do with the VRF system in order to get those incentives associated with the heat pumps. Um, so this is also a requirement and also an operational benefit as well. The third scope will be, um, including in this Phase One is building envelope improvements. I included a couple screenshots. This is not by any means, uh, the full audit of, of what was developed and identified through the walkthrough of building envelope, but these are a, a couple of the, the highlights. So really core to, to building envelope improvements is to tighten the building envelope so that you're improving indoor air quality by decreasing the amount of infiltration and exfiltration that's happening between gaps in doors, gaps between the roof and the wall, um, window sealing, et cetera. Um, so I have a couple, you know, for example, there's door weather stripping. Um, there's roof-wall intersection air sealing you can see in the top. They've even arrowed towards some of the, the holes between the two. Um, and there's, there's gaps, as you can see, in the roof in that middle picture. Um, that's really creating this unwanted infiltration and exfiltration. And that's what's allowing some of this more hot humid air to kind of come in and make it a little bit more, more difficult to maintain comfort. And then towards the right here, I actually have a video that the, um, that we discovered during the audit. Um, I will say I've never had a, a video sent to me, so this is an interesting one. But I just wanted to show just briefly, um, because I think the visual is, is interesting. Let me know if you can see this or not.
Yeah, we can see it.
Can you hear it?
No.
Okay, so they're essentially saying that if you could see these cobwebs that are blowing just above the drop ceiling with those windows below, you can see the cobwebs flowing actually because that means that the air is going through. Um, the insulation is a bit discolored and that's because air is constantly coming through and, and making that insulation discolored, which is what they would work on sealing in this specific area. I was just essentially reading over what he was saying to make it easier. And then the last, actually I don't think this is last, I think we have five and I, I was thinking in my head four. So this is, this is four, I believe, duct sealing. Um, Max, do you wanna go ahead and, and take over for this one? Just give a quick breakdown of duct sealing?
Oh, Morgan, um, duct sealing is essentially, as the, even a new duct, right? Your typical rectangular sheet metal duct has leaks, um, just from the manufacturing and the install. So a duct sealing is, is actually a new technology where, uh, they pressurize the duct work. They have to prep the duct work and pressurize it, um, so that they introduce a seal that adheres to any, uh, essentially self-detecting of the, uh, automatic detecting of any cracks. Uh, and it seals to itself much, um, kind of much like how, um, there, um, how chemicals in our blood coagulate. So this is kind of like, it, it finds the gaps and it coagulates. So I found it is- So I found it is useful to have a visual plan. Took a couple pictures from when the company came out to do a demonstration. So they put a typical screen, just a window screen, cut a hole in the duct, took a window screen, and then they started pressurizing the duct with a seal. And as the seal came through, that it formed a seal on that window screen. And by the end of that, as you can see at the bottom picture, that hole is completely sealed. This particular measure also includes a component of coating of all existing coils, and that's both interior and exterior. The benefit of that being the coils, coating coils, obviously, it's coating coated coils that is more resistant to corrosion, right? So operationally, you are extending the life of the coil. And in addition, there's improved conductivity, right? With minimizing surface rust, surface deposits, surface corrosion, it improves the heat transfer thereby increasing the efficiency of the equipment. If you coat the outdoor coil, you can imagine the AC units of the outdoor coil will work more efficiently. If you coat the indoor hot water coil, that is more effective heat transfer. Thanks, Morgan. We can go to the next slide, please. Here we have another measure, which is the air purification. This is in response to our observation at the school currently that in order to maintain the quality of indoor air conditions, in each of the classrooms, there is currently a in-room type of air filter, air purifier, right? And that introduces, number one, energy use because now you have a plug-in air purifier in every single room. And number two is a maintenance task, right? Because now you've got to examine each air purifier and replace as necessary. So we have proposed a solution of a centralized system where essentially this solution we use is the same space that currently has the air filters. Essentially, we are replacing the air filter bank with one that is ionized with electricity so that it attracts particles to itself thereby achieving a equivalent of more 14 performance. For those of us that have replaced air filters, we noticed that there are more ratings. The higher the rating is actually, the more effective it is at capturing particulates, right, down to the smaller particulates. So currently, the filters in the elementary school air handling units are about more five equivalent. So we are proposing a more 14 equipment, allowing the school to remove the room-by-room air purifiers while achieving a better outcome in the air purification process. So I put a couple of pictures there so that people can see how that actually looks like from the training video of the installation. So you can see the frame essentially is what is the bulk of the system, right? The frame includes a power feed, includes a transformer, so that's all part of the work. That's in fact, the more involved part of the work is to provide new feed and power in the system. The filter media itself is a blue part where the maintenance staff can take out and replace, just as they do with any other regular filter. I've actually chatted with one of my colleagues recently that installed a filter about eight years ago. And they said the first changeover, that's a typical office building, I should say, the first changeover occurred five years after the initial install because there is a measurement point which measures the pressure drop across the filter. Essentially, it's self-detecting if, it's monitoring if the filter is too full to cause too much of a pressure drop, then it's time to replace. So even based on that monitored system, the first filter lasted five years. So I was very impressed with that. But the manufacturer typically says, hey, depending on your usage, you could be one changeover a year or even down to six months per changeover. So for those that are concerned with how is this system maintained? That's some of the info we have.
Next, really, we wanted to highlight both our phase one targeted budget and then also some additional funding opportunities that we've identified as well. So between those five measures we've listed, the HVAC upgrades, the building management system, the building envelope improvements, duct ceiling, and air purification, our total phase one budget is coming in around a not to exceed of 4.2, which is really the total of all five of those. Now, additional funding opportunities that we've identified, but are by no means guaranteed are one to start the Eversource incentives through MassSave. Those we're estimating at about $525,000 right now. That's based off of a prescriptive variable refrigerant flow, which is the VRF, the system we're installing a rebate, with some, a safety factor included essentially because we're actually outside of the prescriptive constraint. So we do have to go into a custom rebate, which is why this is not a firm and fixed number yet, although we have applied for the incentive and are waiting to hear back. Second is green communities. The grant cycle is upcoming. The deadline to apply is early October. And this grant opportunity could look anything close to $250,000, which is the standard, all the way up to $500,000 if we were to be able to secure a decarbonization grant, which is what this project would be focused towards. And then lastly is Green School Works implementation funding. This is brand new. Early August was when this funding opportunity came out. And Acushnet has submitted interest forms for this electrification project that includes air source heat pumps. And then just to close with community benefits, we hope this project really strives for is broken down into three different budget buckets. It's fiscal, social, and environmental. So fiscally, we're upgrading the elementary school for needed facility upgrades while also making sure that we do it in the most energy efficient and comfortable way while utilizing those savings to help pay for a project. The energy savings are guaranteed by trade, and we're really utilizing as many local and state funds as we possibly can to help reduce the capital costs where that comes from Eversource and also Green Communities grant opportunities. And this new Green Works funding as well. Socially, we hope to optimize indoor air quality in the elementary school and solve those humidity issues. And that will in turn hopefully positively impact student and educators' comfort. And then lastly, it's of course environmental with a measurable reduction in utility consumption and also reducing greenhouse gas emissions by transitioning to this decarbonized solution that also provides those incentives as well. And that was all we had today to present. And now I think we'll open it up to the team for Q and A.
Chairman, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I stepped out for a second, but I'll promise I'll view this on YouTube afterwards. Did you do like a baseline air quality test? Did you, was that discussed at all? Was there a baseline air quality test as part of your service? Or, you know, as part of this process on your end? So how do you, you know, what's your methodology in determining what's the right level of upgrade or, you know, system that's needed?
Max, do you want to take that?
I would say from the perspective of how did we design, if I understand your question correctly, how did we design the mechanical cooling system, right? We looked at your existing equipment, number one. For a cost-effective feasible solution, we want to be able to reuse as much of the existing infrastructure as possible. So we maximize the size of the coils in your existing air handling unit so that we add appropriate cooling equipment to supply those coils. So that's one part of the method. And also, we did load studies, a load study in terms of heating and cooling mode to make sure that each area would be sufficiently cooled with this solution. As far as, so from that perspective, and also with our controls, right? The controls make sure that the new equipment and the old, and the existing equipment in terms of the boilers, the air handling units, the exhaust fans will operate in an integrated fashion. So that's what improves the heating and cooling of the space. And a lot of the space conditions, a lot of the challenges, as we understand from the school, for example, excessive humidity is a function of not, it is a function of several things that we're addressing right here, right? Not having a chemical cooling means you cannot strip moisture from the air. Having an envelope that's aging means that there is uncontrolled infiltration of air. And having a duct work that's leaking means that there is uncontrolled exfiltration of air out of the duct work into spaces that might form condensation, right? So all these factors are considered in terms of developing our solution.
Do we, what's the status of our insulation and, you know, all that?
So that's the part you stepped out on, unfortunately. I actually sent along the entire building envelope report last week that hopefully you guys can get up to speed on at some point. But they highlighted, you know, the gaps in the, you know, the building.
Envelope, right?
So whether it's at doors, they look at things as simple as that one goes. And then they look at.
So you did like an energy audit that the average customer would do.
It's like, yeah, so with MassSave and erratic at home, they did this to a grandeur scale. And we have a full, you know, 20-page report with all the findings on it, with videos, pictures, so on and so forth.
I mean, the thing is with this, you know, heating and cooling is such a tricky. I mean, I've got Bob Brown who built my house, right? We were one of the first houses on the green community, the new specs for a green community home. And sometimes these things are too tight, right? And there's not enough ventilation in this. You need cross-ventilation and things of that nature. There's so many factors that contribute to air quality. You know, I'm glad that you guys are looking at this and getting a third-party professional to look at that because it's, as much as we try to make it an exact science, I feel like sometimes it's not an exact science. There's so many circumstances that will contribute to a situation.
Right, and you're absolutely right that we do not want to solve the solution by starting the building ventilation. With a commercial building, by commercial, I mean any building that's not residential, the difference is that there are dedicated ventilation systems, right? In this case, there are central, what's called heating and ventilation units, our heating units, that's not present in a residential setting. So we, our controls will, our controls will include the control of outside air intake, right? The dampers will control the fans to make sure that adequate ventilation is always maintained. What we don't want is infiltration of air from sources that we cannot cool or heat or condition and go into spaces that we do not intend, right? That's a lot of rationale for developing the building envelope work, the duct ceiling and the air purification is to make sure that we treat every single, every single unit of air that comes into the building.
Mr. Jim?
Mr. Jasper? So you put up a screen with like four or five different punch points, and I noticed that the added cooling is $3.1 million of the $4.2 million cost. And the rest of the building envelope and the air purification and the three, two or three other things were roughly $1 million. So adding the air conditioning to just Acushnet Elementary School is $3.1 million? Is that what that's saying, that last slide you did with us?
We're correct in that that energy conservation measure standalone would be, yes, the 3.1. But we really see the HVAC upgrades in concert with all of the other ECMs, but really mostly in concert with the building management controls because controlling new and existing systems is really where you're going to see most of the benefits and where you're going to get the additional incentives as well.
So.
Go ahead.
If I may add some context to that large, relatively large number for the HVAC calls. So that's because working in an existing building, we have to do the structural and electrical engineering, and there's an upgrade on each side, right? On the structural engineering part to make sure that we do structural reinforcement so that the units can be located, the outside units that provide the cooling, right? The refrigeration units can be located on top of the roof. And also electrically, they can, there is upgrade for new panels, new electrical panels, new feeds to supply to the units in addition to the controls. So just some consideration for why this goal is part is not just purchasing the units and installing the units. It's also a lot of the install work and a lot of the groundwork in terms of engineering, in terms of upgrades.
That's a good, that's a good point too, Max, because I think that also reinforces the fact that this is a not to exceed for a reason. It's a not to exceed because we are still waiting for some of that information back as it relates to our surveys and our studies regarding how much is needed in order for us to electrically power support a project of this nature. So this is a budget, this is a not to exceed, and the hope is that it comes in under that.
Do we currently have air conditioning in the Acushnet Elementary School?
We have limited areas that are air conditioning as well as we have window units in certain areas. So we have some larger units that condition some spaces. Then we have window units, you know, in the libraries, in the main office. That's about it.
So you talked about some, some systems are being replaced, but some are being repaired. What is the sum that is being, seeing now Patrick just said we only have very limited air conditioners? What is being repaired and what's being replaced for, I guess, $3.1 million?
So to get a little bit into the weeds, there are 11 heating and ventilation units. So those are the central units that supply ventilation to the majority of the spaces. Those are getting reconditioned, will upgrade components as necessary. And those are being reused. It's just that we are adding a coil, a refrigerant coil in each of the units. And the coils will be supplied with the outside air unit, outdoor units that are on the roof, right? There are actually 27 modules altogether on the roof to supply that. That supplies roughly 280 tons worth of cooling. If you recall, we mentioned that we will be adding nominal 304 tons, right? The other 24 tons come from three rooftop units that are currently supplying some smaller isolator areas on one wing, the blue wing of the school. And that's being replaced, so that will receive new units.
And most of the systems are new. Most of the systems are new cooling systems that were not in place and onsite beforehand that we are adding.
So unfortunately, there's another concern of mine with air conditioning units on the roof, right? So we just put a brand-new roof in the cost of, I guess, somewhere $2.5 million, we'll call it, right, for this conversation piece. In that warranty on that roof, does it call out anything about any additional, anything, da-da-da-da-da, about additional units being added to a roof? Avoid that roof warranty? And if we did put additional units on the roof or stop pulling the existing ones off the roof to replace them with new ones, does that void our warranty?
So I'm glad you asked that because the manufacturer of the roof and owner of the warranty, if you will, has very much been involved in this project. Everything's going to be run by them, so we do not void that warranty. And then, you know, to get back to Max's point, there will be structural needs, you know, to the roof to be able to support all these units, which also will be factored into the equation to make sure not to void the warranty. We do not want to do that.
To add to Patrick's comment, we have supplied, we have been in contact with the roof installer, and we have supplied them with our intended locations of the outdoor units. We are waiting to hear back from their comments, but it's pretty common for us to work collaboratively with roof manufacturers, roof installers. Our operations team are very much aware that we need to maintain the roof warranty. So that's typically not an issue. In terms of replacing the units, the openings are already there. What we do is essentially have a roof curb adapter on top of that. So usually that, that's not, that usually is not a structural change to the roof, right? That's just replacing the unit, it's the same footprint, same duct work.
Who's gonna, so who's gonna warranty the roof after you? You just made a comment about the existing openings, but we know we're gonna put stuff in there that might not be the same size. What happens if we start getting a leak through that?
It's under warranty because there's.
From whom, this company or the roofing company?
They sign off on any changes that we're gonna make before we make them so that we know we're not voiding the warranty in the process.
So the roofing companies are gonna take responsibility for another companies?
Again, they set them all the plans already where the units are gonna be located, where the new roof is, where an old roof is. Again, they set them all the plans already where the units are gonna be located, where the new roof is, where an old roof is. And the roofing company signs off on that to validate our warranty will still exist with these changes.
Part of the project, you said heat pumps. So, heat pumps are used in Europe a lot and they're very hot on energy. With the rising cost of energy costs, what is this really gonna do to the school's energy bills?
The VRF technology, the heat pumps, right? On that, at least applied to a Cushing net, is an energy cost saver. The reason is because a Cushing net uses, the school uses number two oil, right? Heating oil. And heating oil is a relatively expensive source of heat versus electricity is expensive. However, VRFs are efficient, right? Heat pumps are efficient. To think about it, with heating, we roughly have about 80% efficiency, meaning 80% of the input energy eventually gets into heating the air. Versus for the VRF system, you can think of it as around anywhere between 200 and 400%. Of course, we don't call that efficiency, we call that, that's essentially extracting heat from the air and moving it into the, into the air stream. That's why we call it a heat pump. So, in terms of energy cost, it's a net saver because when you look at per unit of heat provided to the air stream, it's cheaper to operate the VRF versus the oil heating. Now, oil heating will remain as a full redundancy, meaning we are not removing any of the existing heating coils. So, in the future, you still, if for any reason electricity really becomes expensive during a short period of time due to market conditions, you have the option to continue to use oil for heating purposes. Again, another benefit, I would say, of the, as Morgan mentioned, this is very much a decarbonization, decarbonization strategy because the oil will remain what it is for the next 100 years, for the next 200 years. Oil's carbon intensity will be there, right? Emissions factor. Versus the electricity grid is getting cleaner and cleaner. As, you know, a town with Cushing net has purchased green energy or has agreement for green energy. Similarly, across the grid, right? The grid is getting cleaner and cleaner. So, if you heat with electricity, even if the efficiency does not improve, the grid itself gets cleaner. So, your carbon footprint gets cleaner, which helps with some of the application of the green credits and other grants that are focused on decarbonization. So, that's an indirect financial benefit.
Just to add to that, these numbers aren't pulled out of thin air, obviously. They've looked back at three-plus years of our utilities, cost and usage, our oil cost and usage. They've been in touch with Eversource where they did a time study of our usage. And then, they, eventually, we'll see the results in their reports. But they put all that together to analyze where there's going to be this energy, positive energy savings versus negative energy savings. So, it's, it's a lot of work. It's not just.
We don't know what that positive energy savings is? Because we know what the cost of the project is, but what do we know about the energy savings?
The cost of the project, we don't. We have the not-to-exceed figure. And we also don't have the final report because, again, all this is anticipated. So, if we go back to the purpose of why we're here, it's to get the articles on the warrant so that we have the opportunity, similar to the ambulance, related but not, right? If we miss the boat here, all of a sudden, we're at Springtown meeting or the next Falltown meeting. And we don't have the opportunity to jump into these things anymore. This isn't making anything official, it's just giving the board of selectmen the opportunity to enter into a contract agreement and secure debt once we get these reports and say, wow, this is a great project or wow, this isn't a great project.
Okay, so you just said a magic word, debt, okay? I don't know if we need these folks, do we need these folks on to talk about that? Or Mr. Kelly might want to ask them something? Because I don't think we need to talk about debt with these folks.
Yeah, we can discuss that afterwards. I just wanted to keep them on for any technical questions. Mr. Kelly, you have a technical question?
Yeah, you're talking about using old equipment and new equipment and kind of, from what I understand, combining the two. Can you discuss the lifespan of the new equipment? The lifespan of the old equipment that you're using? The number of years that you expect this to operate? And is there warranty on the new equipment? And is there an extended warranty or is it the old warranty on the old equipment?
And Max, do you want to start and then I'll take over for warranties?
The rooftop units and the VRF units are typically, the lifespan is typically 15 to 20 years. Of course, it depends a lot, right? It's like asking how long can a car last? It depends a lot on how it's operated and what conditions. But that's the typical. In terms of warranty, it comes with, we are the manufacturer, it comes with the standard warranty on the new equipment. And then, Morgan, pass to you on the existing equipment, please.
Yeah, so, I mean, I was gonna add, Max said, so, when we're really including and adding new equipment to work in concert with existing equipment, like Max said, that's adding a simple coil to an existing heating and ventilation unit. So, the existing structure of the H&amp;B unit will remain. And us adding in the coil with the controls is really how this piece of equipment is going to operate efficiently and effectively over the long term. We have a standard one-year parts and labor warranty as it relates to workmanship of our construction project. And then, like Max said, we stand very firm with our warranties on new equipment. So, there will be a warranty on the coil, there will also be warranties on the rooftop units. Typically, standard equipment warranties for rooftop equipment will be first-year parts and labor, similar to our construction. And then, also, there's usually a five-year warranty on the compressor and sometimes a 10-year, five to 10-year warranty on the heat exchanger. So, it's based off of parts, though. That is not a labor warranty for an extended period of time. We do offer extended warranties, though, and that can absolutely be purchased as a part of this contract to get an extended warranty if that's of interest.
What would you?
But really to ensure that, go ahead.
What would happen if the old, you put new equipment into old equipment and the old equipment failed?
So, that's a little bit what I was mentioning in the building management systems scope of work, where we noted that we've included additional funds in this not-to-exceed in order to cover when we find issues of that nature. So, when we install this building management system, we'll be able to see a lot as it relates to existing operation and where there are some small failures that you wouldn't have been able to know of before. For example, dampers, actuators that weren't working before. So, we've included funds in order to cover the replacement of those. But for the most part, air handlers have a fan, they have dampers, they have actuators. And there's really not too, too much in there aside from the coil that we'll be adding. So, we're pretty comfortable in the number that we've, that we've included to cover those other repairs. And based off of other school projects that we've done, usually, we're able, able to make all of the repairs necessary in order to make these units continue to run effectively.
I would also add that during our initial walkthrough, we did a comprehensive inspection of each unit. So, we have determined that the current unit conditions are in good condition. Like Morgan mentioned, you know, the housing is in good condition, it's uncorroded, right? The fan motors are operating, the fan, in terms of the blower condition, we did look at that. And of course, down the road, small components could fail and that's part of the continuous maintenance. That's part of the maintenance process. But as far as the current condition of the housing, the important parts, if you think of it as a frame of the car, is in good condition. So, we did take that into consideration in this recommendation.
Mr. Ora?
Couple of questions, just two questions. One, have you, is there any recent projects that you could point to that you've been involved in similar to this scenario where, you know, you've retrofitted and put new stuff in? That we could, you know, talk to the people who've done that? You know, is there a recent school? And then, the second question I had is, have you looked at, or do you look at mini splits? I know, like, there's a trend, well, it may not be the best trend. What's that?
Mini splits, similar to heat pumps.
Right, has that been part of this examination? Where hospitals are going in the direction of that? Have you examined that, a system like that, are those systems for this project?
I can answer the example one. We do, retrofits is essentially all we do in this team right here, Max and I. So, we're constantly retrofitting existing systems and existing buildings. So, I'm sure I can come up with something to send to you that's an example. If you're interested in talking to someone, probably not here on the phone right now. I would want to get the necessary approvals in order to give you that information. But can absolutely send you an example of someone that we've worked with on a retrofit like that.
And obviously, references were part of the vetting process. We got full reports of what they've worked on in other towns and schools and similar projects and savings. We have the whole package. So, to Morgan's point, she can, she can get the approval to continue to share those and we can do so.
Yeah, I'll answer the second question you do on my, Morgan. The question was, have we considered a split system? We have. In fact, the first step is to take a comprehensive walkthrough of the building, understand their systems, and come up with a solution that hangers to the, to your particular building. In this case, for a Cushing Elementary School, right? The system is built as a central ventilation unit. Meaning, all the ventilation air comes in through a central system rather than, for example, if you look at the middle school, it comes into each room through a unit ventilator, right? That type of system might be more available to a split system. I'll point out some of the differences. If you have a central system, then most of the heating cooling capacity, your right cooling, comes through that ducted system. So, it's more cost-effective to provide a coil in a central system. Second is that we minimize the refrigerant run into the occupied space because now the refrigerant stays in that mechanical resonant out onto the roof where it connects to the roof, out there for connecting units on the roof. So, that's an advantage, right? Because that avoids all the compliance and detection, other necessary work that a split system might involve. And further, we maximize the use of existing equipment, which is expected to be in good condition so that we do not unnecessarily add indoor heads, well-mounted unit or cassette or otherwise other cooling delivery devices, right? Terminal devices into the space. In general, a split system would be even more expensive. Of course, it depends on the particular, particular school setup. But in general, a split system requires more refrigerant run because now you're running refrigerant into each room. So, those are all part of the consideration. For a central ventilation system like the one in Cushing Elementary School, adding a coil is the most cost-effective way to do it.
Any more technical questions?
So, this is, so this is basically just an upgrade of the air conditioning system, not the heating system?
The controls, I think, are a huge component of this that I don't want to miss. We, you know, everything will be able to alert, control, you know, let you know maintenance coming up so that we can prevent it before it breaks, right?
But there's no, my question is, no upgrade of the heating system? The oil is whatever we're using, right?
Well, yes, the heat pumps. So, the boilers are gonna kick on to get the heat of the building up to a certain extent where the heat pumps can effectively and efficiently turn on to shut off the oil and now use energy that we can conserve and operate more efficiently than the oil. So, there is a heating component change to this as well.
There is. The very core, actually, of these types of projects of a heat pump to decarbonize is really to take over some, maybe not all, but some of the heating that was done by oil before. Now, in the swing seasons, when you're at, you know, 55 degrees down to 30 degrees outdoor air temperature, the VRF system, this heat pump system will be doing the heating instead of the traditional oil boiler system.
Any more technical questions?
No, sir.
All right, well, thank you, Morgan, Max and Beth. We're gonna let you go to jump into our next part of this. I appreciate all the info.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for having us and thank you for letting us do this virtually. We appreciate the flexibility.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Patrick, to Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, Mr. Gasper.
Patrick, you struck that nerve of debt, right?
Sure.
That everybody's curious about, $4 million, $4.2 million, roughly up to $4.2 million. And you said it would allow the board of selectmen to go out and borrow that amount, right?
Well, just $4.2 is the number without incentives, without grants. It's not gonna be $4.2. We just can't guarantee the incentives at this point in time. We haven't been awarded the grants at this point in time.
Correct. So, it's again up to, let's call it $4 million for the sake of this discussion, doesn't matter. It's $3.5, $3 million, $4 million, whatever it is. The debt, okay? $4 million. I don't believe that this board can just say, let's put an article on town meeting floor and we're gonna, it's gonna authorize to borrow up to $4 million. So, if you're gonna try to borrow that kind of money, that's gonna require a debt exclusion because the town doesn't have in its capacity to pay this down. So, you're shaking it? No. So, why don't you tell me how we plan on paying down that debt?
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously not my lane, but based on conversations that I've had with their offices, Town Administrator, Town Accountant, your Town Bond Council, that they could draw down and ban slash and/or bond this debt so that there wouldn't be an adjustment to the tax rate. That's what I've been communicating.
Really? Riddle me that, Mr. Town Administrator, please, because I don't understand how that's ever gonna happen.
No, it wouldn't.
Want some numbers?
Nope. I want to know how we borrow $4 million. So, a band is interest only, then how do we borrow? Once we end up borrowing, because you can't just pay interest for infinity, right? We're doing that right now in the school roof.
10 years.
Right? So, you're a big deal. So, I'm paying interest for 10 years, then I still got this whopping principal. Hello? So, let's not kick the can down the road, why don't we just address the elephant in the room? Is how do we approach $4 million? Take it on $4 million worth of debt?
You either have to take it through the debt line on the operating budget or you do a debt exclusion.
The part that makes me nervous is we had, Mr. Kelly and I had Town Accountant and Treasurer run some numbers, various 20-year, 30-year bands and bonds. No matter what, $200,000 a year. We walked in a town meeting last year with $980 in free cash. The town doesn't have $200,000 a year guaranteed, that we can guarantee every single year. So, we really have to dive into this and look at it. It's very hard to rely on free cash and hope there's an extra $200,000. So, this would end up having to be budgeted right off the rip if it's not a debt exclusion. Again, that's for the respective, it's for the town to determine, not myself. I'm not gonna tell the town where to spend the money.
Yeah, but we can't consciously move forward with an article for $4 million. Let's just call it $4 million, I don't care if it's three, whatever the number's gonna come in at, right? We're not even prepared to talk to the people tonight on what this number's actually gonna be, right? Hard number, exactly what's coming in and what we're paying for, right? So, if you're gonna do it via a debt exclusion, which is a borrowing, that's what you're asking us to do, is borrow. You keep saying no.
Well, if it was a debt exclusion, one, we would need to be on the ballot. Which was, you can't do anything until it's on the ballot and voted on the ballot.
Can't be on a presidential ballot.
Can't be on a presidential ballot. So, we're talking way out now. So, again, we have time to discuss and figure out these things. We're not asking to finance the debt September 30th when this is voted on. And again, this is, I, Chairman Hinckley, respectfully, again, we were in a meeting. It was clearly stated that we can do this without debt exclusion in that small conversation.
Then you left and then we read numbers and now I'm looking at the finances. I didn't guarantee anything.
No, no, I'm just saying, what was communicated to me up until this point?
Right now.
What I'm trying.
And my response, excuse me, Mr.? My response was, okay, we'll have to look into it. And I sat down with Jamie. That's all this information's transpired since. I think what Mr. Gasper's trying to say, and it was very similar to what I said in our meeting, it is very hard to base things off of what could happen. And I want to be very transparent to anybody here from the schools that I keep hearing that, oh, I thought we were aligned. We are aligned in the fact that we need to do something about it. It's the timeframe that's not in alignment right now. And it's very hard for us to present to the public that this is a necessity, even though I think that there needs to be something done without that final report that is gonna show up the day of town meeting. That's the part that makes us nervous. It's really hard for us to jump out there and tell the taxpayers in this town how this is gonna affect them if we don't even know yet. That's ultimately, it's a hard decision to make. And it's not because we don't want to see something done, and I need to stress that. Because I've been hearing that from different angles across the board, all through town. None of us on this board is against fixing problems. What we are against is presenting information that we don't have. And I just need to be absolutely clear about that point.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that, you know, laying out that process, just to put things in perspective, right? A spending request of this magnitude, the only parallels really is, we had a library that went to the, that was roughly right in the same ballpark with a state match that got shot down by the voters. We had a police station that got shot down by the voters. And then we had a police station that was properly vetted and then did approve right around that ballpark. I think the police station was like 5 million. So something, any expenditure in the millions, I think is going to require a great deal of vetting above and beyond just a stakeholder working group.
So a couple of comments if I can. One, again, this is just the opportunity. We're not seeing any fate with this. It's opportunity. As you said, town, town members shut it down, give them the opportunity. Two, it's all about timeline, you know, to your point. If these reports come back, everything looks great, you know, it's less of a cost, we've received the incentives, we've acquired and been awarded these grants, and now it's more affordable, we have the opportunity to act. If it's, if it's garbage, we don't get the grants, the incentives are cut in half, you know, something else happens in town, we can't afford it, you have the power to proceed or not to proceed. It's, you know, to draw a parallel line.
With all due respect, Patrick, you're putting a great deal of responsibility on us and this isn't fully baked, right? It, just, just the optics of it. It's, hey, we've done our thing and blah, 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 and we're asking you, Board of Selectmen, to use your credibility, your political capital with the residents to get behind something. And I wish it was clear cut, as clear cut as explaining to people, well, you know what, we don't have all the numbers here. People are going to say, what the hell are you doing, Board of Selectmen?
Yep.
And so that's, that's the issue. So if the school committee wants to do all that legwork and be the face of this and go out and get signatures and do all that stuff, then knock yourself out. But I think it's, and I'm not shirking our responsibility, because if all of these things were vetted, we've always stepped up when we needed to be. What I'm saying is, where we are right now, I don't feel like this is something that's ready for prime time, at least with my signature on it. And that's a high standard. I'm sorry that I've raised the bar, but again, it's process oriented and, you know, I'm not going to speak for my colleagues here, but when I put my vote behind something, it's because it's ready to roll. I don't put stuff out there just to see where it lands. I'm sorry.
No, again, I can appreciate that. We knew we were against a tight timeline, you know, we didn't want a September 30th town meeting, we asked November, so we could have these reports and we could have more meetings and have more discussion. I just, I can't stress enough from my perspective, not that it's a formality, but it's a formality. Nothing changes with these articles being voted in. And if anything, it gives us the opportunity that if we wanted to act sooner than later, before these incentives disappear, before we talked about the cost of everything continues to go up, before this is kicked down the road and the cost doubles, triples, we don't know the future. I'm not standing here because it's a want, it's a need. And I've, I've not, I've put in a year's worth of effort vetting this out, going through all this effort, not for fun, because I'm trying to be fiscally responsible for the town people, you know, as well as the school. So I'm afraid of the alternative is all of a sudden our band-aid fixes start failing, we have humidity, we have surface mold, we're spending $300,000 plus again to clean, which we, again, we can't afford and SIR funds are gone to do that. And now, you know, everyone's kicking up a sick building again and we need a new school. And now I'm standing here going, we have $100 million, and what can MSBA do for us?
Patrick, I think we vetted bunker replacement more than we've vetted this project at this level.
I respectfully disagree because we have an RFP out and it's vetted by the DMR.
Talking about this board. You're asking us to sign off on it. I'm talking about this board, okay? Talking about this board.
So could I, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gaspard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I'm trying to get my arms around the debt, right? So we say, no, it doesn't need to, and you've been told by certain individuals that we're going to exhort this into the budget, 200, 300,000 dollars a year. 4 million dollars at 20-year borrowing, roughly 3, 3.5% is 300,000 dollars a year. I can clearly sit here and tell you and everybody else at home and all the people in this room, we do not have 300,000 dollars a year to put into this debt, which is a debt exclusion, is the way it should be done, which means higher taxes. Debt exclusion means higher taxes. So you're asking us, let me finish now, because you've knocked down the debt thing, so I'm just going to explain the debt thing so everybody at home can understand that. I need somebody to stand up at that podium and tell me how we're going to come up with 300,000 dollars a year for 20 years, right? Because we know a 30-year borrowing doesn't work because the damn system's not good for 30 years. So why would I pay for something that's only going to last 15 or 20 years, first and foremost? So 20 is the max cap, that's why I went with 20, okay? So that's roughly 300,000 dollars a year. I, I don't know how we're coming up with 300,000 dollars a year to pay for this. We've been very creative on how we do things without debt exclusions, right? I ran a campaign, quite honestly, on it and how much we've done without debt exclusions, okay? If you need, I'll show you that card again. But what I'm saying is, is 300 grand is a lot of money. We just did a school roof and we didn't have to go for a debt exclusion for a rock share of like 1.2, 1.3 million bucks, right? Because we use a solar revenue fund, right? We've been very creative how to do things without debt exclusion. When I sit and look at a 4 million dollar number, as creative as I can be with finances, I have a tough time figuring out how we're going to pay for 300,000 dollars a year for 20 years. So the only way I think you can do it is a debt exclusion, which would require a town meeting vote and then a town ballot vote, right? And I would say, I would rather have the ballot question first before you do an article, right? So go to the ballot, see if it passes. If it fails, you don't need a town meeting article, that's all I'm saying. That's the only way you do debt exclusion. You can't have one, one, the other. I don't know who's led you down the path of believing that we can be authorized to borrow, but then who told you? So that's true, we can, with a Board of Selectmen responsible to borrow through the treasure, right? The problem is, is where do the Board of Selectmen, now that this is going to be the Board of Selectmen's problem, is where do we come up with that financing? That's, that's what this article is basically asking the Board of Selectmen to do, is just figure it out. So I'm just trying to figure out what everybody else is telling you.
I'm getting, I'm getting new information tonight as well.
So you just be honest, and I want, because you always are honest to me, Patrick, right? But I get a little excited when people stand at that podium and they start telling us that other people have told them that this is manageable. I want to know who that is and I want to know what that plan was.
If, if you were to say, hey, we've looked at our budget, our operating budget, and we've scrubbed it, and we think we can come up with 300,000 dollars a year out of our operating budget for the next 20 years, then maybe we have a conversation.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's self, if you can, if you can be self-sufficient in this process with your existing budget, then, you know, maybe we can get this thing moving quicker than anticipated.
Yeah, no, many of these projects are built to be self-sufficient, but because of the magnitude of it and adding cooling, we're going to have energy savings, but, you know, 4,000 dollars a year in energy savings isn't going to pay for any 300,000.
No, I'm saying like if you said, hey, dude, we're going to.
Yes, no, and then make budget cuts. I understand. I'm just saying.
Get rid of this, get rid of this, get rid of that.
In performance contracting, these projects tend to pay for themselves with energy savings over the years.
The problem is, is the town of Kushner doesn't have years. And that's, that's the real.
Neither do our school buildings.
Correct.
You just said 4,000 dollars in energy savings, so how do I come up with the other 296,000?
Well, again, that's, I'm, I'm not shrugging my shoulders to say that's my decision.
Look, I know, I know you've, so you've just.
I've been told that.
Again, Patrick, you, you're a great man, you know what you're doing, right? And, and God bless you, but I don't know who's telling you, don't worry, just do this article this way, you let the Board of Selectmen figure it out. Because here you are speaking to the Board of Selectmen, we're all sitting here going, I don't know. I'm telling you, maybe a percentage of that we could figure out, right? And we could help out with that, yeah. But for, for us to guarantee the residents of the town of Kushner for 20 years, we're never coming to you for this problem. And my problem is, is these folks, and what I've read says phase one, right? So what is phase two, phase three, phase four? What does that all calculate to, and now that's a major problem, right?
All right, so a couple of things there. Phases, that's the easy one. It's whatever we choose it to be. We could have zero, no phases, which could very well be the possibility after this meeting, or we could have two, three, four, five. That's what they're going to report back to us in the investment grade audit. They're looking at generators, boilers, lighting, water flow, building envelope, which we're piling into phase one. They're looking at solar on top of the roof, which would pay for itself. We're looking at all sorts of things. So those would be future phases. We've honed phase one down into controlling and improving the air quality environment in the Kushner Elementary School before things go awry.
I totally, I totally get what we went through, right? And I wasn't part of it, it was the school, right? But I seen all those safety clean vehicles over there, right? I don't know what the final analysis of the scope of services, whoever came in and said, no, it's not really mold, it's surface, whatever it is. And everybody jumps out of their skin saying, oh my God, I'm getting sick, right? We have to do what we have to do. You and the school committee and business administration acted on that. But now, now we're coming after that, we're saying, oh, we're going to fix that problem by spending 4 million dollars. I don't, not know if anybody's made that claim from those people right there that actually in the business of selling stuff said, and this is what it's going to do and this is how we're going to, we're going to guarantee to you, you're not going to have that exposure to that, whatever it is, dust, mold. I don't know, simply put, I don't think an air conditioner can get rid of mold.
So again, it combats the humidity that causes the mold. Humidity causes mold in tight confined spaces with dirt, dust, et cetera.
Just, I wanted to ask this question. What's the cooling season, like, seriously, like, what's the cooling season? Is there, what's the data, like, okay, we have X amount of days above X degrees at 20 degrees.
So we get to control that. We can, we can say, we want the environment in our building to be 80 degrees at the coolest and that system's not going to turn on until then. We pick.
Yeah, but that's just, that's just the thermostat. Let's not make more of it.
Well, that's the controls in the air.
But that's, but did, see, you can't say that, right? That would be for these people if they have engineering degrees and everything else to say, the only way you're going to control humidity is if you're running the AC system at this degree. It ain't just pick a random number, you know, hey, 80 degrees is the number, because quite honestly, how many days out of the summer is that air conditioner actually going to kick in if you put 80 degrees, right? So that's, that's just a magical number that somebody's pulling out of their hat. They should be able to tell you, you need to run the system and this is the.
Which they will.
Lowest you can put it at is 74 degrees and based on that consumption, based on this many days, this is what your energy bill is going to do.
So back to their points, they're going to build that into the control system that's going to alert you, all of a sudden something's exceeding the rate that we want to allow and you need to open or close a damper, suck in more air, exhaust more air. That's all going to be engineered, if you will.
Well, I'm not, by, this is, we're 20 days away from town meeting, that's what aggravates me, right? Is we're trying to vet this now, this board. It's the first time I'm seeing anything and seeing this kind of detail, okay? No disrespect to you, but first time this board's ever vetted this stuff out, 20 days before a town meeting. And you expect the people at home to make an educated guess on whether they want to support a 4 million dollar expenditure and us. And again, I'm going to go back to the article, we don't, we can't just borrow and saying, we don't know how we're going to pay for it. And I don't want to mislead the public.
Again, timing's against us, that's really all I can say to that.
So let me ask you about timing. See, if we were, if we were to consider this moving forward and we talked about if it's going to be a debt exclusion, if somebody else can magically tell me how we're coming up with 300,000 dollars a year, and I can magically come up with some money, but it's not 300,000 dollars a year, okay, for, for a payment plan, can we go to the ballot, the last Tuesday, I think the bylaw was changed, the last Tuesday of April, for a ballot question? And then 30 days later, you have a town meeting, you're still locked and loaded before the end of the school year?
The problem is, if we want to move forward, we're looking at the summer of 2026 now. We're hoping our band-aid fixes last that long without incurring absorbent costs to school funds and town funds at that point.
So why, why, why that company's not going to, unless, even if this passes, we haven't convinced anybody how this is going to be paid for. So you're going to tell me that these both folks are going to keep moving forward just on us?
Nope. That's why I'm just saying, best case scenario, we have that opportunity. If everything lined up and everything worked out, we have the ability to say go. We, we don't have that ability until, if, if we wait till the ballot, if we wait for spring. Then at that point, everything lines up and we vote it and it's all good, now they're going to press, okay, we need to order this equipment, now we need to wait for the supply chain, we can't construct this project while students are in school. Boom, the two months of summer pass, school started, now we're waiting till the next summer. And costs have increased because of the economy.
So this is a problem for finance, because we still haven't approved a financial plan on how to pay for this, Patrick. So even if this voted through, it just says we have the ability to borrow, but we're not going to go out and borrow, if it's a debt exclusion, that wipes that out, it's going to go to a ballot question. And if it fails, you're screwed anyway, quite honestly.
Right.
I just would love to know that finance plan that somebody threw out to you and said, we got this 4 million bucks covered, because I know last year's deficit was a million dollars, we have a general, a structural deficit in just the general budget itself. And now we're sitting here saying, don't worry about it, we have room to exhort 300,000 dollars.
Again, the conversation's up until this point where, you know, we have the ability to ban and bonds because of our great rating at the town and there's debt coming off the books in future years.
Right now, you're carrying roughly 97,000 dollars and it comes off in 8/1/2026. That's the debt the school's responsible for right now. And it's, it's part of the problem, right? Is every time we're going to get rid of debt and say you're going to provide relief to the taxpayers, bang, we got another reason to go out and spend and put you in more debt and keep that debt on the taxpayers. It's always sold to people that way, right? Well, when it comes off, don't worry about it, you're going to, your tax is going to go down. The problem is, is we always have an excuse to keep going out for more debt. And I'm not saying this isn't legit.
No, I can't say.
I'm just explaining to everybody at home and whoever wants to listen, that that's the process. So your taxes are never going down even when we have all this debt, right? We have a police department we're funding right now and responsible for a few hundred thousand bucks. We're going to have an excuse then too to say, nope, we're not giving anybody back money on that debt either, even though the 20 years is gone, we're going to find another reason to spend that money too.
I mean, I'm just sitting here trying to say, this is responsible to me to address future expenses.
I, I totally get it, right?
I don't want to come sit here, I'm being fully honest, I don't want to come up here and say, we need 100 million dollars for the school, how's that going to be received? 4 million dollars looks like.
You'll be laughed at.
But we have aging buildings that were built in the 70s that have evidence of problems and issues that if we do not address them, it is going to continue and it's going to cost more.
This is part of the other problem with the envelope, right? That should have been looked at years ago. So whoever the facilities manager is and all these people that work for the, for the maintenance department should have been looking at and addressing the envelope years ago, right? The mortar and the bricks, right? Everything's cracking, the seepage, we got water through a gymnasium wall, I heard you reference before. What's being done about that?
That I found was reported in 2004.
Correct.
So now, now it's our problem to continue to deal with, yet no one wants to fund it or solve it, so we're going to have water in our buildings and let kids go to school so we're gonna have water in our buildings and let kids go to school and that.
Well, I think all the other stuff, that million bucks, we're sealing up the envelope and everything else, just the three million bucks is adding air conditioning to the elementary school, that's what I heard.
The thing is, Patrick, you have a school committee.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
It's, it's incumbent upon the school committee to, to solve these problems.
Patrick, I don't know what's happening. I don't mean, I don't mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not trying to cut him off. Patrick, you walked into a pile of mess, I'm not gonna lie, okay? I know you haven't been here that long, what are we talking, two years?
Just two years.
Just two years, so keep in mind, we are not blaming you for any person.
No, I'm not saying that at all.
Very clear about this, this is not your responsibility to put out fires that you sat down it.
A little anecdote that I shared with you guys, though, right? So we're, we're trying to be as responsible as we can and not ask for capital all the time, right? We've done a lot of projects, Glazier was supposed to be on the Springtown article, we didn't ask for it, we, we played a shell game of funds to get it onto a grant to free up local to be able to afford it. Yes, it's town dollars, but it's because we were strategic and what went to
What was that?
Safety and security measures that should be talked about in the public space.
Yep.
The reason, true topic. Uh, we have a cafeteria fund with a significant balance that we've, we've purchased equipment to the tune of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to plug in this winter. Well, as soon as we went to go order it, get it in, we had a site on it for that equipment, can everything go? Nope, your, your electrical infrastructure needs an upgrade, your, your plumbing infrastructure needs an upgrade. We just dug up two pits the size of that table in both of our cafeteria floors to upgrade the floor drains by ourselves. We're doing the same with the electrical, we're doing the same with the equipment. These buildings are no longer plug and play. Any little thing that you wanna do, it's like trying to play a CD in an old car with a cassette player. You just can't do it without an update, an upgrade. And we're absorbing a lot of those without coming publicly and saying, hey, you know, gold star from me, pat on my back, because we're being fiscally responsible, or handling it, because we know these projects are on the horizon.
And we commend you for that, and I appreciate that, and I sent that to you the other day, and I fully, fully mean that. The problem is, is where do we come up with four point two million dollars or less, or three hundred thousand dollars a year? That's the real
I, I understand, and I wish I had the answer. Not my lane, but I'm maximizing the incentives we can get and the grants.
I just don't want you, I just
This is the best part of saying no, because I don't think you deserve it. No, I, I understand.
We're saying it's moving too fast, and we have to figure out how to find it. It's a big difference.
Um, I fear of the future.
Yeah.
What the cost will look like, not, never mind in November, but, you know, December, January, February.
If it means waiting six to seven months to have a better plan, and we have to spend a tiny bit more, we lose a little bit, but it's responsibly done. That, that's my issue. I'm not saying this doesn't happen.
I wanna know what that amount is, though.
Correct, but what are you gonna, what are you gonna say?
What's worth buying in six months, is it ten grand, is it a hundred grand, is it a million dollars?
Probably gonna fail. Right, right now, we can't find three hundred thousand, so it's not really that much of a difference, you know? Whether it's ten grand, twenty grand, three million, like, we're, we're all on board with fixing problems.
Yep.
Especially ones that affect the health and safety of our teachers, our students, our staff. Like, we don't wanna see any of these issues happen. But we're being held to the fire right now. If we don't do this, like, oh.
No, to be fair, I said, no, if you don't do it, there's still opportu, or if you do, there's opportunities to still not do it. And I wanna just draw that line with the solar, TPA agreement. We thought we were gonna have select in here building the canopy, and it went to town article, and we got permission to enter into a contract, and then those numbers became unfavorable, and we said, absolutely not, this is fiscally irresponsible to sign that contract, and we did not.
Yep.
Similar instance here.
Mr. Kelly.
Simply put, Mr. Chairman, and as you know, if you ask some of the finance people a specific question, they'll give you the specific answer. Simply put, we have a great ability to borrow. We don't have an ability to repay the money we borrowed.
It's like having a credit limit of fifty grand on your black card, if you have no money to, to, you know, sounds good. Maybe we've gotta move town meeting, you know?
I don't know. We're not having a town meeting.
I think we have other business to conduct on town meeting, right? So I don't know if that's a discussion that we're gonna have, is maybe to give this, use some more time to, to get this information out and let it be vetted a little more properly, is maybe we go up to, and then we continue town meeting to a date and time certain, and that is a November date, so that we have more, right?
I, I think that would be a benefit. I wanna see the nine thirty report before I make any decision.
So what, by, you, you understand what I'm trying to say, you, because I don't wanna, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to compromise, right? And I think that's really what you need to do, because we need to understand, first of all, the debt better, right? And we need to understand that project better, because that didn't work, right? So we need a better breakdown of where the costs are gonna be, it'll give them more time to figure that out, right? And come to us, well, to you, and then you come to us and say, okay, it's not four point two, it's, you know, three point five with this, with all the other incentives and grants, now we're down to two point six, right? And that brings down that debt number, but I think the way I see this is, the lack of better terms to use, selectmen owners, you're not ready for, for game time, right? And I don't think this project is ready for game time, but I, I will say that if we did town meeting, so we could get all the prior year bills passed and everything else passed, we go to town meeting September thirtieth, we stop at a stop line, and we make a motion to continue town meeting until the date and time certain, which would be a November date, once we figure that out with whatever else going on with the primary, you know, the presidential election to keep the town clerk head screwed on straight and navigate elections and everything else. I know she usually needs a week, ten days, to do all her certifying and everything else, so we'll figure out what that date is. And then maybe we come back, and we have that, you know, we have the whole month of October for you to come back in and vet more with the board of selectmen and express some concerns, or maybe you come back and say, you know what? Project's junk, um, we don't even have to go back, right?
I'm all for that, November is what we were asking for.
Maybe you know September thirtieth, this is just, it, it ain't gonna work already, and then we just motion to table the articles, and there's no continuance of town meeting, right? But I think that's to keep the option open for this year, for the school, for the, for the summer months, right? I think the only way to try to keep those articles alive is to do exactly what I just recommended, right? Is go to town meeting, and then we just continue to a date and time certain, and we only take up a couple of articles for the school. That's fine, it's basically a half an hour, forty-five minutes, you're in and out.
So that's gonna, does that have to be a motion written in, or? I don't wanna find out, like, in the spring, all of a sudden, two of my articles are missing because I didn't get a final copy.
We're not, we're not doing it in the spring, I'm talking about in the fall.
The last spring.
He's referring to the fact
I'm saying two articles.
I know you're speaking publicly.
You wouldn't want me to make a motion right now?
What do we need to see for that to be guaranteed?
You're speaking to the board of selectmen, I can't make excuses for people that you've spoken with in the past, since I wasn't part of the dialogue, okay? Because if I was, it probably wouldn't have happened, okay? So I'm gonna leave it at that. What I'm saying now is you are speaking directly to the board of selectmen, right? We hear you loud and clear, we heard the conversation loud and clear, and all I'm trying to do is put a solution to the problem in front of everybody to say, that might work. And I think, I'm asking you your opinion, do you think that would work?
If you're guaranteeing a November date for us to, to continue with this, I'm a hundred percent for it.
Uh, you can't guarantee a date because it's a town meeting that votes to continue to a date certain.
Correct, so we can pick a couple of handfuls of dates, talk to Pam, find a couple of handfuls of dates. I make a motion, it makes a second. So we'll, we'll have the option.
It's a lawyer in me talking, but you can't guarantee it.
Make it safe, like, the first week of December after Thanksgiving.
We, we, we can, somebody's gonna make a motion to, to continue to a date and time certain, right?
And that's possible.
Certain, and then all you do is get a second, and then the moderator's gonna say, all those in favor of, you know, November twentieth, please raise your hand, motion passes, boom, we're back on town meeting floor, November twentieth.
Talk to Pam, find out.
But he asked for a guarantee from this board, you can't give him that.
I don't know how outside of it, guarantee it was suggested.
I don't know how outside of it works, the people decide to do is another story.
No, right, I didn't, I don't understand if it was two thirds, go to what it meant, that's, that's what I was asking.
I mean, I don't even
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, I think that's a great idea. It'll alleviate a lot of our concerns, my personal concerns, from what I've heard.
It's only gonna help my case.
We'll also have more information, and, and I think that's a big part of it. And our job is to make the most educated decisions we can, and present to town the most responsible way to do things. And I, I think as that compromise Mr. Gaspar brought up is a great idea. And I would just suggest Mr. Kelly speaks with the town clerk as soon as possible, get a handful of dates.
She's watching.
Yep. Either way, speak with her, follow up with her, get a handful of dates and make sure we can do this.
Absolutely. All right, Miss Gomes, once. You got a hand?
Oh, hi Sarah.
Hi. Hi, Sarah Gomes, school committee.
Hi Sarah.
I just wanted to just state a couple of things about this project that Patrick has been working on so diligently for the past year. Um, I just wanna make sure that I am on a clarified who we need to speak to regarding moving forward with this project. Is it Mr. Kelly, is it Mr. Gaspar, who is our direct point of contact?
Everything goes to Mr. Kelly, put me on every email. I told Patrick that the other day, attach me to every email, just in case if something gets in the weeds, it's been a busy month leading up to town meeting.
And every report, just to state that every school committee meeting practically, we have been discussing this project for a year, and for, you know, the selectmen to say that maybe we, you haven't heard anything about it, or you haven't been seeing the details, that's concerning to me as a school committee member, so I just wanna make sure moving forward that everybody is in the know, and there's no surprises like there was right now to me that you hadn't heard the details.
As the chairman noted, right, we, we know there's been a communication breakdown with Gomes, so that, as the chairman just noted, so well, if, if it needs to be, if any communication comes to the board of selectmen's office, it should go directly to the town administrator and CC, the chairman of the board of selectmen.
And it'll be shared with you because
And then they'll make sure that it's, Mr. Hinkley as a chairman right now will make sure that the board of selectmen are notified. He can just simply print it out, ask the town administrator to print it out, and our administrative assistants will leave it on our desk for our review as well. And I'm sure it's gonna come up as a upcoming board of selectmen's agenda item, and we can have you folks in to discuss that.
Perfect.
And keep, and keep the process moving so that everybody in TV land knows what the hell's going on, because quite honestly, not everybody watches selectmen's meeting, quite honestly, not many people, not a lot of people are watching
School committee.
School committee meetings, right?
Absolutely.
I don't have time to sit around and watch Channel eighteen, to be honest with you. So there's a lot of people that are in that same boat, right? So between the two, you would hope that, that nobody really, they could say, well, you know, we didn't see it, but at least the newspaper's covering things, a selectmen's
Completely understood, but again, I just wanna reiterate how important it is for our committee to be speaking with you and having you all in the know as we thought we were doing in the past, which again, did not happen, so I appreciate.
I think there's various degrees of, like, getting things over the finish line, right? So you've got, you know, a behind the scenes stakeholder group that does the work, but then once it's ready to be publicly faced, I mean, it's probably gonna be one, two, three meetings before the board of selectmen to finally get us to a point, right?
Understood, so let's set expectations right now.
From the, from the school committee.
Yep, no, I, I just wanna set expectations, and you set my expectations of what you expect for us to do moving forward. And again, CCing Mr. Hinkley on the emails is fantastic, and maybe we have maybe a weekly or bi-weekly meeting with whoever is needed about this project before the potential November meeting.
Yep.
Just to make sure we're all on board here.
Oh, we would definitely expect you folks to come back in, once you get all your relevant information, come back, and that's, that communication's gonna happen with the chairman. He'll put an agenda item on and say, we're gonna discuss this, and maybe it's two or three times prior, depending on what information we haven't gotten, have gotten. Patrick will be the supplier of that information, if we're, we're happy after one meeting, and we're ready to roll, and the board of selectmen are comfortable with it, we'll move forward, right? And we're, we're cool with that, but
Fair enough.
So you've been in here three or four times over bunkers, right?
Yeah, and I would come here as many times as you need to, I just wasn't aware that the communication wasn't getting to the selectmen.
Mr. Kelly.
I wasn't either.
I would like to, as far as communication goes, like to remind the board that you, Mr. Chairman, and I went to one or two meetings, but the rest of the meetings of that steering committee were scheduled at the same time as board of selectmen meetings, and so we were not able to attend.
But the information was given to you.
Huh?
The information was emailed to you.
Information stopped getting emailed to me, once again, we're not gonna go
Okay, I just wanna make sure, again, let's set my expectations here, since I'm part of the budget, I'm a budget subcommittee member, so I, I really need to know that.
I started reaching out to Patrick, Patrick's been really, really paramount at supplying the information. Um, but initial phases I'm talking about.
To make sure that it goes to the chairman.
We're not talking about what happens six months
No, no, understood, understood.
I spoke, spoke with Patrick the other day, and I've gotten more emails from Patrick in the last week than I've gotten probably since he's been in town, which is a good thing, I'm not saying that is a negative thing, I'm saying it's great, he's giving me the attachments I'm asking for, all the information. I forwarded it back to Sydney if I'm on the road, and I have her forward it to the guy, these guys. So the communication's already at the point where I like it.
It needs to be.
Appreciate it.
Fair enough, all right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time, I didn't get to say that.
Patrick, take a nap.
Jamie, I guess there's a couple of ways to skin the cat, right? So we could probably just set two, two false town meetings, right, if we wanted to? We could sit, we could just keep these off.
Well, yeah, keep these off, well, actually, no, leave them on as they are. No motion on that. Continue the town meeting to the date and time certain, is the easiest way to do it.
All right, so. Yep, I think so, too.
So you're gonna vote to close and authorize the publication of the warrant subject to the changes that the board is
Is there a motion?
You want a motion to close the warrant?
Close and publish.
And publish the town warrant?
Subject to the changes.
Subject to all the changes that we need, the number one article, and I told you about the numbers and all that, the changes, and also add in the ambulance article.
Yep.
Second, all those in favor?
Could I have a motion to go forward with the warrant process, just to make sure we cover every base, including posting?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Gentlemen, I'm gonna jump a little
You gotta make sure the warrant's right before you post it, right? You want me to come in tomorrow?
Gentlemen, I'm gonna hop out of order real quick, out of respect for the people that have been sitting here for appointments. Uh, I'm gonna jump down to staff appointments. Uh, first one, maintenance foreman, Mr. Matthew Tripp.
Motion to appoint, so moved.
All those in favor?
A second.
Aye. Uh, custodian, Brady Baldwin.
Motion to appoint, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And for the senior clerk for the assessors department, who have actually asked to be here, uh, Ms. Renee Langlois. Um, Renee, if you'd like to get up and just introduce yourself, um, we know, we know Brady and we know Matt, both.
Hi, Renee Langlois. Um, I'm joining the team, and thank you very much for this opportunity.
Welcome. Welcome aboard. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Renee Langlois as a senior clerk for the assessors department?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Bob Brown.
I, I'd just like to thank you guys for the, the whole way we ran through the process, and hi Renee, thank you for your help.
You're welcome.
And your board's efforts to allow our, you know, senior staff to do the interviews and get who we thinks are best for this job. So I appreciate the way we handled everything, and wanna thank you and your board.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Bren.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
I was talking to that chairman.
Uh, slogan street update.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
You wanna?
Yeah, I believe it.
All right.
I gotta find the right tab here.
Where'd we go?
I had jumped forwards, I'm going back to old business number three. Slogan street update.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, there is, there are documents that are the, uh, contract documents for the board to sign that are on a conference room table because of voluminous. And then there's this notice to proceed for the project, this is the next step. After this, we are meeting hopefully, uh, next week with the engineer and a landowner to talk about an easement. Other than that, uh, it's all up to, uh, this board to sign these documents. Mr. Alan Bizco of Bizco Contracting has already signed the documents. And then I have to attest to them as procurement officer, and we're ready to go.
Excellent.
So you just need a motion to proceed for the base work only? That's all you need, right?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to proceed for the base work only.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, September twenty-third, huh?
It's now
That's the same notice to proceed for the base work. I like it.
Yeah, the contractors should be coming in, Jamie, as well, right?
Well, after, after that meeting, you know, we're gonna be a meeting after meeting.
A preliminary hearing, I mean, who does the, the fellow got the schedule, right?
Well, yeah, but they wanted to see if we could do, take care of the, uh, a butter as a meeting with us, so we could meet with the contractor once about, and be able to discuss the two options.
Get that in your book, just so you know.
And, uh, the engineer is back in country. He successfully made it through customs.
All right, we're gonna jump over to DPW road paving. Pass it over for a minute, temporarily. All right, road paving, DPW. Uh, Mr. Gaspar, I believe you
Just gave me stuff to read now, I'm gonna
I am.
So, a few things have come up, we put out Helen, Joseph, and Earl to bid. We put out Nice Lane, Randall, and Kendrick out to bid as well. Um, we got the bids in, um, the unfortunate part on Helen, Joseph, and Earl, it can't be milled, it needs to be reclaimed. So after that inspection, um, we, we get some prices for reclamation. It should, it will definitely come in a bit under the milling. So I would just like to award the winning bids for road paving on Joseph, Helen, and Earl. Hotnix awarded to Pawtucket Hotnix for winning the bid of a hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty cents per ton. No coal plane, and then award the bids for Nice Lane, Randall, and Kendrick for Hotnix awarded to Pawtucket Hotnix for winning the bid of a hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty cents a ton, and Coal Plane awarded to PJ Keating for winning the bid of three dollars and eighty cents per square yard for coal planning. EverSource will be the funding for, for part of these, um, projects, as we place the gas lines on the streets, the additional funding not paid by EverSource will be funded by, the first share would be the fair share funding from the state, the second would be amounts not covered by either EverSource or fair share funding will be paid by road paving line item within the DPW budget. After looking at where the bid specs came in, gentlemen, I've reviewed that with DPW staff, and we talked yesterday with, um, Anthony from EverSource to let him know that he's short funded his fifty percent of the project, so I'm asking them to go back, um, and try to get a reallocation from EverSource, and he's short funding his roughly fifty-three thousand dollars, so he's going back to his company to see if, what he can do about that, making up that fifty percent.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Dana, if you don't mind, I got a question, can I have those papers back?
Yes.
Sure. I got a question about the appointee for here.
Yes.
Is this a straight replacement?
Yes, we had a college student that was working in the pro shop with us, she has gone, since gone back to college, and that is a local college student that I would like to have appointed to replace those hours in the pro shop, answering phones, booking tee times, doing transactions, and then supplement some of that pot time work with doing beverage cot as well.
So this is just for the remainder of this season?
Yes.
This...
Well, it could be, I mean, I want to keep her on, so that maybe next season, we split hours and Riley works a few days, she works a few days, and we have, because it's been a, a question with a concern with the golf committee of having pro shop staff answering phones, booking tee times, doing transactions, we've had that discussion several times, so this is basically a replacement for the current person that has gone back to college, basically. But to give that pro shop staffing concern. This is not, this is not the position that we were discussing.
No, but it's not the person, it's not someone that's gonna work through the winter.
No, 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 it's pot, pot time, it's basically a beverage cot girl that on, she's gonna do pro shop hours, answering phones, and doing transactions. Basically what Riley was...
And if you need her to be a beverage cot person...
Yes, yep.
On an outing or something like that, you'll ship them out.
Bingo.
And fill up the cot.
Yep.
Try to increase sales for food and beverage, right?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's not a full-time spot, it's not a secretarial spot, it's basically a hands-on clerk, and filling gaps for opportunities for additional revenues at different points. As you know, we operate with a lot of pot timers, and when everybody goes back to school, everybody goes back to school, so it's back to the...
I mean, he just, he just whipped that little letter at me, you seen it, two minutes ago, right? I didn't have that in my book, so I don't know who these people are, I don't know what kind of background people have, and I'm just flying by the seat of my pants going, yeah, motion to appoint.
Well, she inquired earlier in the spring, but I had, I had Riley working.
So you're staffed.
Yeah, I was fully staffed, I had hours, and then Riley went back to school, so I started emailing her, seeing, because she's gonna go to UMass Dometh, I said, are you still available, and are you interested still? She said, very much so, I'm like, all right. So she's contacted me several times, like, it's going through the process, I'll get back to you as soon as I get back from the select.
You'll find more than I'm finding.
Is there a motion to appoint Peyton Booten?
Second.
I asked for the motion, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
See what happens when a meeting goes too long?
All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Gaspar.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So we appointed Matt Tripp as a maintenance foreman of the town buildings.
Yep.
Effective what day?
It's effective tomorrow.
Alrighty then.
Way to clean pants. All right, selectmen's announcement.
Just want to make sure. I'll just say this, we were all at Apple Peach this weekend, great job, I think this is probably, I don't know if it was the weather, but it was the best parade, the vibe was there, everybody's in a great mood, I was there both days, and it was just really great, great for the town to officially usher in the fall season, and, you know, nothing we can do to get people out on the golf course to experience the foliage and the green grass over there too, so spend some time in Cushnet.
Agreed.
May I just, you know, kudos, I met Andrew Chopper Tuesday night last week prior to the Apple Peach Parade, right? It was unfortunate, I wasn't able to attend, I had family matters I had to deal with on Sunday morning, but I spoke with Andrew Chopper, great young man, and from what I understand, I've talked to a lot of people that were watching the parade, i.e. all in, in the parade, and again, I know, Mr. Hinckley, you spoke very favorable of Andrew last year for the job that he did with that parade, so I just want to commend Andrew for the great job with the parade, because I've heard a lot of good things, and I was fortunate enough to meet up with him and have a discussion. Good guy, did a killer job again this year, Andrew, so keep up the great work, congratulations to everybody at the Apple Peach.
So this year, the feast was live streamed, Paul Santos did it, maybe next year we can livestream the Apple Peach Festival on Facebook Live or something like that, we'll figure that out.
Have to wear a hat and sunglasses next year then.
Can I ask your selection announcement?
Sure.
So I just want to thank everybody that attended the cruise night two Thursdays ago, was an incredible night as well, thanking to Matt Lobes for helping me get that thing, and he's out there coordinating the outfits, most importantly, I want to thank Fire EMS and EMA for volunteering, Fire EMS for their incredible work out there, plus their, their cooking of the burgers, Liguisa Hot Dog, so congratulations to our Fire EMS Association, EMA volunteers, can't thank you enough for all, what all you folks do for the town of Cushnet, Cushnet Police Association as well, thank you very much, the Cushnet Police Department for being out here on details, and everybody who attended, it was a great time, it was a packed show, we had 120 or so cars that were there that night, it seemed like we had 300 for crying out loud, it was, Mr. Hinckley, I'll be packing some cars with Mr. Paul, Mark Francois from the planning board, so thank you, Mr. Hinckley, for your help, and Mark Francois, the chairman, planning board, it was just an incredible time, Black Tie Cookies, Cushnet Creamery, Matt Lobes for doing clam cakes and fries, every, all the little vendors, the DJ, I forgot who he was, but anyways, I'll get back to you on that, but congratulations, it was just a hell of a bang-up time, and everybody enjoyed themselves, and it was extremely peaceful, so thank you to everybody that participated in that as well, we've come a long way.
It was a great time. All right, I am good, I think I'll just agree with both of you tonight. Next step, executive sessions, we got a couple of them. Executive session under Mass General Law Chapter 38, subsection 21A1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional